Hi Penny, I can definitely hear you.
Steve? Great, great. There have been a ton of last-minute changes, including the fact that my computer died. So, one thing I want to ask of all of you is that there are people who have disabilities and may not be able to see any visual or are going to be in closed captioning, in which case they don't get visuals at all. They're only getting the captions. So when you speak for the first time, just describe yourself. I'm going to say, you know, I have shoulder-length blond hair, I'm wearing glasses and a bright pink top. Simple, just short like that.
I'm almost exactly the same. Short blond hairs, glasses.
I see your hair is longer. Okay. So that's one issue. The other thing is that now Harvey Epstein, I see his picture here, but I don't know if he's on. He wanted to have more questions and have them be much shorter. So he has created eight questions, and if we can get through all of them, that's great. Seven people have entered the waiting room for this. Okay, I should have everybody who's going to be participating be listening to this. So... Steve, are you there?
Yeah, I'm here.
Okay. Now, not everybody is listening to all this speechifying that I'm doing.
Penny, I'm here too. I'm here.
Harvey, good, good. What about Alita?
Hi, Alita's here.
Alita, okay. And there should be also Eric and Marnie and Arthur.
Eric was on and I think he must have dropped off. Hopefully, he'll be back in a moment.
Okay. Hi. Okay, so now there are three of you. Should I go on?
Hi, Alita.
Hi. Hi, Leslie.
Hi. Steve, have you set up the closed captions yet?
Yeah, I'll pop the link into the chat here every couple of minutes.
Okay, but there are people who do not have computers. So I gave out the phone number to Mike, but I guess...
If you only have audio on the phone, it'd be quite difficult to see the captions.
You can't see the captions if you only have...
But the captions do work on mobile. I tested on my iPhone and you can, but of course, you kind of lose the video on mobile. You don't have the option to resize a window next door and watch the captions alongside the video. So the mobile functionality is there, but ideally, hearing impaired meeting attendees will be on a desktop-type computer, or it's easy to have a sidecar window with the subtitles.
All right. Now, I'm concerned about describing how we're going to be going forward with only three of the candidates here.
Yeah, hopefully, in the next five minutes before our planned showtime, the rest of the candidates pop back on or pop on. I know Arthur just sent out an email about the forum, so hopefully, he's on his way.
Yeah, I saw that. But yeah. What time is it? Is it... No, it's 5:20.
5:00 left.
All right. So instead of having four questions composed by Harvey, we're doing eight questions. Hopefully, we'll get through them all, and you'll only have one minute.
Yeah, Penny, we may get through six. We may get through five, but we want maybe to mix it up a little more to get... Because four questions might be tough, be limiting.
Right. Okay. But you're only going to speak for one minute instead of two. I originally said two minutes. It's going to only be one minute. Okay, Arthur, I see that you're here.
Think about it, it's like speed dating. You get a minute to answer the question and move on.
That's good, fair and modern. Okay, so you're not... Don't forget, please don't forget, you're going to give a very quick description of yourself that...
Two minutes is then, right?
No, 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 no. That's the opening statement, but you have to say what you look like, a very quick... You know, you might want to say, "I have a beard and mustache, I'm wearing a white shirt." Okay, and that would be sufficient. Mike has asked for that.
Okay.
Okay. And Carlina's going to be coming at 8:30, and she's going to answer all the questions at that time. She'll have the same two minutes, and then two minutes, opening, one minute, closing. And, oh, and Steve, is it possible to put up a... Like a time clock of some kind?
No, you can't really, unless, you know, unless somebody were to put it on their screen and share their screen, one of us co-hosts. But it would change so frequently that you'd almost have to have a separate person, like sort of staffing that clock. I think the timekeeper should just pay attention and just give audible warnings when appropriate.
Okay, then I'll do that. I had... That'll be me. Okay. So we're kind of ready to go.
Okay, Eric, just hop back in the waiting room. I'm letting him in now.
Okay. So that's one, two, three, four, five, six. The six of you are here. So Eric, just let me tell you, you need to just... When you're going to have two minutes to introduce yourself, but just give like a tiny little description of what you look like. Brown hair, white shirt. I'm sitting in my living room. You know, just because there are people who are visually impaired, there are people who are on captions, closed captions, and that... Okay. And then, instead of having four questions, where you'll get two minutes for each question, we're going to aim for eight, but there may only be six or seven. I don't know what the questions are. Harvey has composed all the questions. And then, when each question is asked, you will answer... He's going to have different order. You know, the same person won't always be answering first and answering later, et cetera. Okay? Does that seem fair? Where's Marnie? She's not here.
I'm continually skimming the folks in the waiting room to try to find Marnie, and no, I don't see her here yet. Two minutes.
Okay, so how many people are in the waiting room? Can you tell us?
Nineteen.
Nineteen?
It says it on the screen.
Okay. I hope more are coming. I presume more will be coming.
Yeah, it's not even... Yeah, that's good. Twenty-two people now.
Okay. And actually, Mike isn't up on the screen yet. Is he here? He should have been here at 10:02.
And in fact, Marnie's here, so now it's just Mike, I think, that we're waiting for.
Okay.
So candidates, y'all are co-hosts, which just means you have the power to mute and unmute yourselves. Just kind of use discretion there. The attendees won't have that option. They'll be hard muted, so...
Yeah. So Marnie, as I told everyone else, the first time you speak, give a very quick description of what you look like. You know, long brown hair, wearing a brown, dark shirt that's striped, because there are people who are visually impaired, and there are also people who are on captions, and the 504 Dems would really like everyone to do that. You're muted right now. You don't have to be. And, okay, and the format has been changed. There will be more questions in shorter times to answer. You're only going to have... There are going to be maybe six or seven or eight questions. I have not composed any of these questions. It's all been composed by our moderator, and you will have one minute to respond. So I will be keeping track of time. I'll tell you when there's 10 seconds left, and our tech...
Penny, not to cut you off, I'd love to keep the timekeeper on schedule here. We got 7:01. I don't want folks in the waiting room thinking we're running too awful behind. If you don't mind, I'll let him in.
Okay, I just wanted to say one more thing to you, Steve. After I say 10 seconds and then I say, "Time is up", you know, I want you to have to... You're going to have to cut people off, but you can give them an extra two or three seconds, but you have to cut people off.
Sure, yep, sounds great. I'm opening the floodgates.
Okay, great. Ah, okay. Hi. Hi, welcome. Welcome to... This is a co-hosted forum by the 504 Democratic Club and Palm. My name is Penny Minz. I am the Palm portion of this. And I don't see Michael here yet, but I'm hoping he's going to be here. So Palm is a local chapter of NiPAN, New York Progressive Action Network, which is a statewide organization of progressive, politically active progressives. It was formed in 2016, and we've been working to accomplish progressive objectives through political and grassroots actions.
Hey, Eric.
So, Michael, are you here?
Right here.
Okay. No, no, I'm looking for Michael Schwensberg, who's the president of the 504 Club. Are you here? All right.
We have a Michael without a last name who is still connecting to audio. I'm not sure if that is Michael Schwesenberg or not, but you can give him a moment to see.
Okay. Is there anyone who's connected to the captioning? Steven?
There's no way to monitor if anyone's watching the captioning.
Okay. So you want to just tell people how they can do that if they want to?
There's a link in the chat to access a closed caption stream, which you can keep up as a sidecar window to the Zoom window if you would like to. There may be transcription errors. We apologize.
Okay, it's pretty good, though. Okay, so 504 Democratic Club is a democratic club that is made up of people with disabilities. I wish, Michael, we were here to really describe the good work that they do and the important work that they do. The people with disabilities are the largest minority group in the nation, and 504 is a citywide organization. Palm is just the progressive action of Lower Manhattan. It's from 42nd Street down. So we got together and we twisted his arm, and we got Harvey Epstein, state Assembly Member Harvey Epstein, to moderate this forum. So without further ado, Harvey, would you take over?
Thank you, Penny, and I want to thank everyone for joining us this evening. You know, having these forums and having these conversations are really critical to our democracy, and I really applaud everyone's decision to want to run for office and make an effort to make a difference in the community that they know and they love. It's not easy, as I can personally attest to, but it's really rewarding to be able to serve your community in a variety of ways. So we have six candidates who are running in Council District Three. We have one candidate who's running in Council District Two. Councilwoman Rivera will be coming on around 8:30, and hopefully, by then, we have gotten through where we are with the Council District Three candidates, and we'll turn our attention to that race. So just quickly, my name is Harvey Epstein. I'm Assembly Member in the 74th District, and my physical descriptions, I'm a white man with basically no hair, no facial hair, and I am really honored to be here with Palm and with 504. And so we're going to... The first step, we'll be doing introductions. Each of the candidates will have two minutes to introduce themselves, and we'll be going in alphabetical order. And then, after that, we'll be asking them a series of questions that each candidate will respond to, and then we'll have each candidate have a one-minute closing. So the introduction's two minutes, response to each question's a minute, and the closing's a minute. And the hope is, we'll get to as many questions as possible. We end up having additional time, then we'll take questions from the chat, but I don't expect that we'll have that additional time. So I assume that all the candidates are ready and excited about answering these questions. And so let's start with the introductions, and we'll start with Leslie, since we'll go alphabetical, and then just so people know the order, it'll be Leslie, Eric, Phelan, Marnie, Alita, and Arthur. And then we'll reverse as we go along. So Leslie, give two minutes of an introduction.
Thank you very much. My name is Leslie Bogosian Murphy. My physical description is, I am white. I would say, middle-aged woman, blond hair. I have glasses on today, and I'm wearing an oatmeal mock turtleneck. Like I said, I am Leslie Bogosian Murphy. I am running for the open city council seat in District Three, and I am very excited about our grassroots campaign, which was born out of great support from my fellow residents. I've been a resident of this district for over 16 years, living in the same pre-war apartment with my husband Paul, seven-year-old daughter Cecilia, and our rescue dog Bailey. I am the very proud granddaughter of immigrants. All four of my grandparents fled Armenian genocide and ended up here in New York City. One grandfather, a window washer; the other, a factory worker. The latter got his right hand caught in the printing machine he was manning, cutting off all his fingers and rendering him limb-disabled. This in a time before the strength of unions or disability payments. That helped form my core democratic principles. Over the summer, I did what no local elected could do and started the Student/Teacher Virtual Learning Initiative, bringing in student teachers to our Title I schools and getting our most vulnerable student population free virtual synchronous learning this year. My father benefited from social programs that allowed him to attend City College for free as an in-need student. That helped me form my core democratic principles. After I found out the West Side cruise ships spew out diesel emissions equivalent to 34,000 idling tractor trailers a day, I researched a greener path forward, and now, working with Senator Brad Hoileman's office, Con Ed and the EDC, we are taking the first steps to realizing electric shore power on the West Side. My very best friend in high school tried tailor everywhere she went due to a severe case of asthma, which pollution didn't help. That also helped me form my core democratic principles. We are facing difficult budget decisions ahead. In this time of COVID, I want to prioritize aid to our restaurants. Thank you.
Eric, thank you, Leslie.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Okay. The next speaker?
Yeah, Eric.
Hi, everybody. Thank you to Palm and the 504 Democratic Club for having us tonight. My physical description is, I'm a white man with dirty blond hair and a blue shirt, and I'm sitting here in my living room. My name is Eric Botcher, and I'm running for city council because the community and the city I love are in crisis, and we are facing unprecedented challenges as a city, but also opportunities that we must seize. Next year, we are going to have a new mayor, a new city council, new comptroller, new borough presidents, new district attorney. Thirty-five of the 51 council members will be new, and we have the opportunity to make great change on the big issues of our time. But we're going to need leadership with the vision, the experience, and the knowledge to make it happen. My path here wasn't a straight line from a small town up in the Adirondacks, struggling with mental health issues, to finding myself and finding community and activism here in New York City, to my work in city and state government. But to learn more about me and our campaign, visit ericbotcher.com. But tonight, I look forward to the discussion of issues, including issues facing people with disabilities. The 504 Democratic Club is named after the First Law to give rights to people with disabilities, and we've made great progress since then, but not nearly enough, not nearly enough. And some of the people who I respect most in my life
Fifteen seconds.
are the activists fighting to make this happen, fighting to change this, and we're fighting with you. So I look forward to a strong dialogue about this tonight and many other topics. Thank you very much. Let's make change together.
I don't know how to...
Thanks.
Sorry about that noise.
Phelan, you're up.
Hi, everyone. Hi, everyone. My name is Phelan Fitzpatrick. For those visually impaired, I am black. I have short, black hair, dark brown eyes. I'm wearing a blue shirt, and I'm very, very good-looking. I'd like to... Thank you so much for inviting me to such an important forum. My name is Phelan Dante Fitzpatrick. I'm running for city council in District Three, and I moved to New York over 20 years ago, the year before September 11th. And like many of you, I came to New York for opportunities that a queer, black, 19-year-old wouldn't find in Cleveland, Ohio. And for the past 16 years, I've been a small business operator in District Three, and I'm also a single dad to an amazing three-year-old daughter named Artemis, who goes to school in the West Village. I was raised by a white, single mother who worked three jobs, and I had an amazing, openly gay, black father, who, when I was 19 years old, was targeted outside of a gay bar in Akron, Ohio, in an attempted mugging. When my dad refused to give up his wallet, the two men shot my father, and he died in the parking lot. Because of my father's race and sexual orientation, finding my father's killers was never a high priority. That's one of the reasons why I'm running today. And I'm very excited to be here and excited to learn from many of you who are social activists and teachers. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Marnie?
Okay. Hi, my name is Marnie Halasa. I am half-Swedenian, half-Filipino. I have long, black hair, and I'm wearing a black sweater with white stripes, and I'm sitting here in my living room. But my name is Marnie Halasa, and I'm running for the Third Council District. I'm a lawyer, community activist, former small-business owner of a coffee shop, and a figure-skating coach, and I have lived in the district for 27 years. And I am running because we are in a crisis, and there is a failure of leadership. I don't need to tell you that we are in a homelessness crisis, unemployment crisis, and a small-business closure crisis. And we're in this situation because city council has emphasized gentrification without any worry for a social safety net, and I'm running to restore this. As someone outside the political establishment, I offer real solutions, like canceling the rent with rent vouchers for tenants of small businesses that have been hit hard by the pandemic. The rent voucher, if accepted by the landlord, would then become the new legally-regulated rent, which in turn would reset and correct market rents. This system would eliminate any trigger for eviction so people can stay in their homes. I also want to repurpose abandoned hotels and empty office buildings into single-room occupancies with permanent leases for the homeless with nearly 80,000 people without a home. This could be a solution if we had the political will. I'm also here to push the existing legislation in the council, the Small Business Drive Survival Act, with a majority of council support. There is no good reason not to have an emergency vote.
I don't hear... I don't hear you.
Penny, Marnie has frozen. Everyone else's video is still going. Let's just be quiet for a moment. Give Marnie a couple of seconds to get back in. All right. Maybe what we do is move on to the next candidate.
Marnie, are you back?
Yeah, can you hear me?
Marnie, maybe cut your video for a moment. If you cut your video, it'll improve the bandwidth for your audio to come through, but it seems that she might be frozen again. If she does come back, maybe have her cut her video. So my suggestion is we move on, and Alita, and maybe it will come back to Marnie when she's... Because we can't hear her.
Oh, can you hear me?
Yeah. Do you want to try to finish up?
Yeah, yeah. But I'm also...
About 40 seconds.
But I'm also finding it important to have a voice in our own destiny when ice rinks in New York City tried to double the commissions on figure-skating coaches. I was part of a team that collectively organized these independent contractors to fight and win a fair contract. If I am elected, I will fight for the activist person having a say. I learned from Occupy Wall Street and my collective organization with contractors that the entire nation is disenfranchised when setting an economic agenda that is fair for everyone. Legislation like the Small Business...
Ten seconds.
Okay. We need more of this, and this is what I'm fighting for.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Go ahead. Alita, right?
Alita.
Alita, sorry.
And Penny, if you don't mind, would you just wait until the time is up to cut me off?
Oh, I was just giving 10-second warnings.
If you don't mind, could you just cut me off at the end? If that's okay?
Okay. Okay.
So I am a black, mixed-race girl with long, brown hair. Good evening. My name is Alita LaFard. I was born and raised in District Three, and I've been a champion for the rights of those who've been disenfranchised, a proven leader to all those in our neighborhood. My investment in our community began early, from the days of working alongside my mother, advocating and providing care for victims of the AIDS epidemic. I traveled to Costa Rica at 18, dug septic tanks and gave out vaccines. I've worked for NARAL and lobbied senators in Albany for a woman's right to choose. Back home in our Hell's Kitchen community, I realized leadership was lacking. I stepped up and was elected tenant president of Manhattan Plaza, where I've served for the last five years. Our 3,500 tenant body needed an advocate that truly understood their diverse needs, which encompass senior citizens, families with children, and just like me, the disabled. My initiatives included creating and overseeing a comprehensive COVID response, assisting with unemployment and rent adjustments, demanding a wheelchair lift be installed after 40 years of folks being unable to reach our outdoor plaza. I provided comprehensive athletic and arts programming, which served as childcare for essential workers. I brought civic education for folks to learn about and join county committee. I established a community garden and overall have been serving the myriad needs of my neighbors. As a single mom and a disabled adult, I know firsthand how challenging it can be to navigate our bureaucratic system. As a result, I've become an advocate and a 504 resource for our tenants, As a result, I've become an advocate and a 504 resource for our tenants, enabling them to understand the paperwork, providing them with appropriate contacts, and equally important, supporting them with empathy. I'm here to fight for all people in District Three, including small business owners like my father, whose once bustling West Village and Tribeca restaurants are struggling to keep their doors open. I'm here to fight for comprehensive culture changes within the NYPD. And I will fight for our most vulnerable and disabled of neighbors struggling with a cycle of homelessness. Our community is in desperate need of a fighter.
Time, 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 time.
Thank you very much.
Arthur?
Evening. Two minutes to sum up 50 years is hard. Since my first sit in at Bronx Science, my first arrest in a building occupation at Columbia, my arrest for taking down security cameras that were outside the apartment of a 92-year-old woman, from age 27, when I helped take down Ronald Reagan's Labor Secretary as a lawyer for Occupy, to today, when I filed suit to stop the closing of token booths, to being treasurer for Zephyr Teachout, Council to Bernie, Cynthia Jemani, Mondaire Jones, and the Jamals Liberal Democratic Club. I have never been afraid to challenge the establishment. I have detailed plans to address the affordable housing crisis that we have in our district and in our city, to address the decimation of NYCHA, to stop hospital closings and consolidation, to reimagine the NYPD and move dollars, real dollars, to starving programs in the city, to make mass transit free and accessible to the disabled, to fund all schools equally, to address the needs of seniors, climate change, and to preserve and expand parks and give power back to the community boards. I want to be, as a city councilperson, the organizer-in-chief for the Third City Council District. Join me, and today I was endorsed by the, by Black Lives Matter. I was endorsed today by Transport Workers Union Local 100, and I hope to get your endorsement in moving my vision forward. Thank you.
Thank you. And now to the first question, and we'll start with Eric. Eric, less than a quarter of the subway stations across the city are accessible for people with disabilities. What would you specifically do to increase access to public transportation if elected to the council? And really, concrete steps?
Thank you. Well, the most immediate thing we've got to do is ensure that the federal government and the state and the city government step up and restore the budget to the MTA. We can't allow these cuts, these budget deficits to fall on the MTA. We've got to restore 24-hour budget service and not let these austerity cuts result in closed lines and a deferment of the capital plan that we had in place before COVID. That was far too little, but it was a start. They were beginning to put online, put in the pipeline the installation of elevators around the city. So what we need to do is dramatically expand that program and ensure that all subway stations have subway access. But it's about more than that. It's about the platforms and the gaps between the trains and the platforms, more than elevator. Thank you.
Thank you. And Phelan, the same question around subway accessibility, really specific concrete steps that you would do?
I think we need to be clear-minded about what needs to get done. And I think we need to be clear-minded about the obstacles in our way. What are the obstacles? Well, the defunding of the MTA and the social services that are needed for everyone in New York City. And I think we all know when social services are cut to fund other things that other people think are more important, like the police. Public transportation is one of those things. And I think any cuts to city systems affects the least advantage the most. So do we need an overhaul of our MTA system, our buses, subway platforms? Yes. Do we need to fund these? Yes. But it's also about changing social policy and changing people's minds about the importance of what needs to get changed and what needs to get funded more than anything else.
Thank you. And again, same question to you, Marnie. With real specifics, what would you do as a council member to have impact on this?
Actually, I had the experience of going with some Fulton Houses tenants, public housing tenants, down to protest City Hall. And actually, several of them were disabled. They were in wheelchairs and walkers. And it was, it took so long to get from, you know, 17th Street to the 14th Street subway, taking the subway down. We use the elevators, you know. So my experience with them, you know, I saw that they had such a difficult time. You know, again, we need to, you know, overhaul, we need better elevators, we need better platforms. You know, this takes funding. And, you know, they definitely need an easier way of being able to navigate the subways. So, you know, I would definitely overhaul the elevators or platforms. I mean, it's definitely needed.
Alita? Real specifics if we could, yeah.
Sure. I mean, I can speak to this from my own experience of having been yelled at by bus drivers because I was unable to fold my son's stroller when I was, when he was just a baby. I couldn't take medication for my disability. And so that limited my strength and my ability to actually carry him. So I had a standoff with a bus driver who threatened to call the police because I wouldn't fold my stroller. And this was on an empty bus. I also remember crying on a subway platform because I'd gotten off on the wrong stop, and there was no elevator. So whatever it takes to make our transportation accessible, I'm going to figure that out. I can't always afford Uber. And sometimes that's what I'm limited to. So on my very strict budget of Social Security, it's not an option. I need to be able to access the MTA, the same way millions of New Yorkers do. And it's not just limited to those of us with disabilities, but.
Thank you, Arthur.
Well, first of all, I would yell about it every day. I would make it a priority issue. I'm already litigating over adding, in fact, I recently settled with the MTA to add four elevators at 14th Street and 6th Avenue after suing them under the ADA. I would join, I would, as a city councilperson, join with the disability rights groups that are litigating over this issue right now over every station in the city. I would fight to restore local stops on buses like the M14A and D, which I happen to be suing over. I would improve accessorite. I would fight to improve the funding for accessorite. I would resist the closure of token booths because they help disabled people get in the subways. And in doing that, I would yell that the city needs to have more impact and more input into the MTA board so that it could push a program like this forward.
And Leslie?
Thank you. I guess it's no surprise to anyone here that 25% of the New York City subway is accessible for people with disabilities, 25%. So I strongly believe in promoting transportation, public transportation, that is equitable. But yes, we do need the money. This is a purely, purely, purely money issue. But you wanted specifics if we did have the money. I think we have to look at service animals, and we have to have them be allowed a little broadly. Personal care attendants, sometimes those people are behind the booths. And it's hard for someone in a wheelchair or someone who is disabled to get access. So we need those people trained to, as personal care attendants, to help people navigate the subway system. I think we can, I think we should get some sort of app, which they do have now, but a better app that is, has an accessible map, but also tools for each subway station. If we're going to go to buses, I, thank you.
Thank you all. So we live in a city that has a public housing crisis. The failure to make repairs and fund public housing, it's for over 400,000 New Yorkers. Do you support the current position around RAD? And what would you do to combat the disinvestment in public housing? And we'll start with Phelan.
Thank, am I still muted? Thank you very much for that question. We were facing record-high levels of homeless and affordability issues and stagnant wages before the pandemic. You know, now combined with the pandemic, you know, we have to redefine public value of what affordable housing means. And I think Hudson Yards is the perfect example. Within our district, you have billions of dollars wasted on what could have been an opportunity to create some real housing equity. And most people can't afford to shop there. I can't afford to shop there, let alone live there. And I think that there's a reason why local politicians and candidates are now stating loud and clear that they're not accepting campaign contributions from real estate developers, because up until now, that was a perfectly acceptable thing to do. So as a district, we need more transparency, excuse me, in land use because it's incredibly opaque. And when there is proposals for an apartment building, commercial spaces, I think we all need to come together as a community and decide who does it benefit?
Thank you. And so, Marnie, the question is about public housing, the crisis in public housing. Do you support RAD? And what do you do to combat the disinvestment in public housing?
Actually, I could say that I was part of a, really, a movement in public housing at the Fulton and Elliott Chelsea Houses to stop RAD. And actually, our work actually stopped the demolition of two Fulton Houses buildings. So I'm extremely proud of that. But actually, I think a lot of people don't know that RAD is an eviction machine. And if you look at developments that are converted to RAD in Ocean Bay, they have a very high eviction rate compared to other non-RAD developments. It's something like 7% compared to like 1.2% in other NYCHA developments. So it really is an eviction machine. And actually, the tenants that I know at Fulton, they're in a working group with the mayor. That group is supposed to be an open and transparent group. It actually is closed to the public. Nobody can get in. Other tenants that want to join are actually cut out. And, you know, it's, it's not open and transparent, and they're very upset about it. So I'm actually glad that I have a platform to actually say this. But RAD is a really bad deal for tenants, and they don't want it.
Thank you. Alita, same question around public housing. Whether you support RAD or not, and what do you do to combat the disinvestment?
Thank you. As I think the only candidate here who's lived in Section 8 housing and has been blessed to do so. No, I don't support RAD. I actually worked to help residents get eviction leniency during, during COVID. I think we need to look outside of ourselves for a solution in other places where they've found solutions that work. As, for example, in London. I think that smaller developments are fine, but these large developments are just wrong. We cannot risk the eviction of our most vulnerable. We need to work with the state for equity. Housing is probably one of the number-one issues facing us, our city today. And with the vacancy rate that we see today caused by COVID, I think we really need to reimagine some of what we've been doing in terms of development and make sure that we are filling these vacancies. Thank you.
A minute is. Thank you very much. Arthur?
I'm against RAD. You know, I have, I've represented employees as council to Local 237 who have been whistleblowers and who get ignored. That can't, that has to stop. I've represented tenants who are cowed by having to deal with the opaque, unfair administrative system that exists in NYCHA. Like affordable housing, NYCHA needs money. It's all about money. And it's money instead of finger pointing. And what has to happen in the new city council and with the new mayor is the city has to work and demand from the state and the feds and from its own budget, which may have to get moved from the police department, to raise the billions of dollars that are needed to totally renovate and restore NYCHA housing, which is one of the disgraces of our city. And more than 10% of our population, I think I'm understating it, lives in those houses. And it's an issue that has to be on the front burner every single day.
Thank you, Leslie. RAD and what your specific solutions for public housing?
Yes, thank you. I don't think anyone here disagrees that NYCHA is, is pretty much one as a disaster right now. I mean, we're talking in 2018, 2019, the Public Advocates Office, the City Public Advocates Advocates Office, called the city the worst landlord in the whole city because of the NYCHA housing. We're talking broken elevators, lead paint, no hot water, mold leaks. We're talking about $32 billion for this fix. Now, some people are saying, okay, RAD, that might be a solution. This is so much money. We need money. But that's privatization, and that's a very, very, very scary word when you couple privatization with public housing. So, no, I'm generally not for RAD. I think we have to look at a case-by-case basis because it can quickly, quickly turn into a land grab by real estate interests. And I think, though, we can look into different options, maybe adaptive reuse. But absent of adequate funding, governments are going to keep looking to this public-private partnerships, and we can't relinquish the public land.
Thank you. And Eric, on RAD and how do you fix NYCHA from the city side perspective?
Sure. For decades and decades, the federal government and the state and the city government have starved NYCHA of investment to the point where there's now a $40 billion outstanding capital need. And the buildings are disintegrating. Every day, it gets worse and worse. I got a phone call last night. The water was out. Not the hot water at Elliott Chelsea. The water at Chelsea was out. And for decades, politicians have been having press conferences on the corner, calling on Washington to give the money. And everyone applauds, and then everyone goes home, and absolutely nothing happens. The tenants have had it with that. The tenants are tired of us calling for Washington to give money and considering that be then us having done our jobs. So what we did is, a year ago, we put together a working group led by the tenants, tenants association and non-tenants association, the elected officials, legal aid. So they've been meeting for a year, Community Service Society.
Thank you, Eric. Let's move on to the next questions. Yes, we don't have enough time to do all these questions. And I'll start with you, Marnie. A lot of conversations this year around defund the NYPD. What does that mean to you? What would your policing policy look like if, for your vision of the city?
So I definitely believe in defunding the police. I don't believe in abolishing the police. But I think right now, the police have been getting all this military-grade equipment, and they're using it on peaceful protesters. And just recently, in our district, we had that happen. So what I sort of envision is the creation of a public safety agency that would be staffed by social workers, mental health professionals, that could actually diffuse the situation, de-escalate. Because I think when people go through those sort of mental disturbances, those kinds of episodes, they actually need, you know, they need to be taken care of. But I think also the community wants de-escalation. So, you know, I definitely think that we need to defund the police and actually take that money and put it towards communities of color, youth programs, education. And because I think right now, actually, the police, I mean, they look like an organization that, like, I don't even recognize them.
Thank you. So to you, Alita, what does defund the NYPD mean to you? And what would your policing policy look like for your vision of the city?
So, you know, I'm so sorry. We need to stop letting the people foot the bill for the bad actions of officers. Millions of dollars in lawsuits have been paid out at the people's expense. And we know fully well where these dollars could have been spent better. There are ways to create programming with the NYPD that includes training for social, social worker training. We can prioritize defunding the militarization while fully funding the CCRB and holding our police officers accountable. I think if we start there, then there's more of an incentive to not hurt people in ways that is illegal. Everyone, I mean, this, this new legislation that's been brought forth to have police officers. Makes a lot better.
Thank you. Arthur, what does the defund the NYPD mean to you? And what would your vision of policing look like?
Well, to me, the whole, the police department and the whole question of public safety needs to be readdressed. I think during, when the defunding stuff came up, there was, people were looking at Camden as a city that basically recreated its, its police department. So my, my website talks about reimagining the police department. Every problem doesn't need to be addressed by a uniformed person with a gun. We need social workers. We need healthcare workers. We need people that work with homeless people. We also have to reassess the hiring that goes on and the criteria for hiring. And, and I think if we do all that, billions of dollars can be saved and moved to social programs.
Thank you, Leslie.
So Harvey, you probably know this, as a representative, defund the police means a lot of different things to a lot of different people. I was privileged back in July to be invited to paint the Black Lives Matter sign in front of Trump Tower. Nothing gave me more pleasure. But I am also on the boards of Midtown North and Midtown South precincts to work closely with our police for better community policing. I think it comes down to this. I know we have a minute, so I'll make it quick. The role of policing should be reduced when addressing societal problems. This is the crux of the problem. And to do this successfully, we have to set up the alternative. We cannot do one without the other. Just yesterday, it was announced by Mayor de Blasio, which was actually wonderful news, that mental health professionals and crisis workers would be dispatched through 911 for mental health emergencies. So now, when you call 911, it wouldn't be the police to deal with a mental health issue. It will be the special unit. Now, this is just a pilot program, and it's not starting until February. And I believe it's only going to be in two communities, but that is a big deal. Thank you.
Thank you. Eric, what does defund the NYPD mean to you? And what's your vision of policing?
Yeah, defunding the NYPD does not mean take all resources away from the NYPD. What defund the NYPD, what the movement is, is taking resources away from policing and investing it in the programs that address the root causes of crime. And I support that. Tell you what else I support. Not hiring one more cop who doesn't live in New York City. An independent CCRB with disciplinary power over the NYPD. Defanging the police unions, which is a right-wing destructive force that's held back progress on this issue for a very long time. And take functions away from the NYPD that they shouldn't be in charge of, like responses to mental health crises. We need a new phone number, not 911, to call when someone is having a mental health crisis. Calling 911 when someone is having a mental health crisis is putting that person's life at risk. We need to rethink our approach to all these problems. That's what I support.
Thank you. And Phelan? What is the funding NYPD mean to you? And what's your vision of policing?
It, defunding the police means exactly what the phrase says, defund the police. Systematic racism is systematic because it is on purpose. It is not by. It is not by mistake. And yes, defund the police flattens what should be a very meaningful conversation about what makes us feel safe. For me, for instance, what makes me feel safe might be different from it from what makes you feel safe. But I've been on the receiving end of bad police policies like stop and frisk. And what makes me feel safe is job security, uh, being able to take my daughter to the doctors and not having a thousand dollar uh hospital bill when I get home. Uh, not having my black friends and brown friends overpoliced in black communities to fund a for profit jail system. And s- some city councilperson, whoever you guys choose to elect, has to stand up to the police, the NYPD, because they have a half a billion dollars in marketing budget that they spent on news stories. Make even the brightest of us feel.
Thank you. Uh, the next question, we'll start out with uh Alita. So over sixty percent of people with disabilities are unemployed or underemployed in New York State and around the country. Even thirty years after the passage of the ADA, the number has stubbornly not changed at all. What can you do in the council to increase employment opportunities for people with disabilities?
Well, a name.
Sorry about that. Was it, was that to me?
Yes.
Yes, it was.
Thank you. Um, well, first of all, we need ADA access in in all our uh city buildings, government buildings. We need it around the city. I mean, there's been, I've had opportunities for jobs that I just couldn't get to for previously, we discussed the transportation. Um, people need to be able to work, and it's not fair that we must be uh limited by our um in order to receive insurance. I think that's a big problem for people with disabilities that in order to receive your insurance, you have to make under a certain amount of money. Um, because the I'm perfectly capable of doing a job. But because I, if I make over a certain amount of money, I will not receive insurance. And right now, as we know, many jobs do not include the type of insurance that most disabled people need. So I would love to figure out a way to change that uh paradigm. And I think that's a first step to getting disabled people back to work.
Thank you. Arthur, the question about employment for people with disabilities, thirty years after the ADA, really things have not changed. What would you do as a council member to try to impact on that?
You know, we have this amazing law in New York called the New York City Human Rights Law, which is far, far, far greater than the ADA, because it it has a far broader definition of what a disability is than the ADA does. Uh, and to me, the most important thing that we would need to do would would be to expand exponentially the enforcement that's being done by the New York City Human Rights Commission, which was a wholly underfunded agency, uh, which has, you know, a skeleton staff in reality. And when it, when, so people need to be able to make complaints, they need to be acted on. Employers need to be fearful of not providing accommodations to employees who who might feel the only way to get what they need is to file a lawsuit. Uh, and and I think in that, in that way, if the city was a prime mover on jobs, on accessibility, on 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 housing, on access to stores, instead of it being sort of something that required either the courts have failed to scam artists, uh, the cost would be addressed.
Thank you. Leslie, the same question around employment for people with disabilities. So what specifically would you do in the council to increase that?
Absolutely. The first thing I would do, educate, 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 educate. Um, we have to educate employers, we have to educate people in general, that um people with disabilities, sometimes we see them and sometimes we don't. The disability, I mean, it's sometimes the disability is seen and sometimes it's an unseen disability, such as anxiety or sensory issues or um uh PTSD. So I think we have to educate people first. Um, I also think that these employees, they add value to the workplace. There is a space for them. Um, it it's, it's, they add value because they will continue the conversation and they will show people the value of what this person can bring to the job market. I also think another thing I would add would be resources for the employee employer employee conversation. So um employers, when they do want to post or when they do think they have a spot for someone with a disability, that that conversation can be open and free flowing. Thank you.
Thank you. And uh, let's over to you, Eric, the same point of, you know, stubborn number of employment for people with disabilities. How do we move in and how would you, how would you do something in the council that's physically changing?
Yeah, Arthur is right. First and foremost, we have to enforce New York City and New York State Human Rights Law. Not hiring someone with a disability isn't just the wrong thing to do, it's against the law. And we have to send a message to employers everywhere that that's breaking the law. We have to fully fund and increase funding for programs that work with people with disabilities all around the city. I want to create on the west side, a west side employment network that connects the employers on the west side with residents throughout Council District Three. And I want to prioritize people in public housing, people with disabilities, people want the long term unemployed. We have so many companies moving into the west side. We need to match these jobs with people who live on the west side, prepare our residents to apply for and succeed at these jobs. We need to do very intensive outreach in the community to identify folks with disabilities and get them employed right in our own neighborhood at some of these big employers.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't stop.
That's right. Phelan, it's uh same question about employment with people with disabilities and how do we move the needle on that issue?
Oh, no, you're you're muted.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you for that question. So you know, the inequality uh in the economy wasn't working well for black people, for brown people, for people with disabilities, you know, before COVID hit. And in two thousand nineteen, when we all thought that we were having the best market, we were having the best financial year, uh, these inequalities and differences between people who were white, people who were black, people who had disabilities, people who didn't, were more evident than they ever were. So I think what, you know, any social agenda for recovery at the federal level, at the state level, uh, and at the local level, um, we have to seek to reduce the impact of mass incarceration. Uh, three hundred and seventy billion dollars. Uh, we, you know, people lose in the United States when they are charged with even a small misdemeanor. So I think we need, I think we know what we need to do to take care of people i- in in New York City. I think it is the job of taking care. And we just need somebody with the political will to do it, someone who really cares about people in the neighborhood.
Thank you, Marnie.
Hi, um, you know, I agree with a lot of the solutions everybody is proposing. Um, definitely, there should be outreach in the community, um, find who is disabled, you know, uh, connect them with jobs programs. Um, you know, definitely, I think that's important. Uh, but you know, I think it's also really a change, a change in attitude. Um, I've actually met some amazing disabled people, Tamara Morgan with Adaptive Design. She's actually in this district. And they do great work. They actually, um, you know, have actually um given her names of people who are disabled. They actually go to their homes and actually assess like if they need something that's more customized. And Tamara is amazing. And I think when people see, uh, you know, really, you know, the disabled in amazing jobs and um, um, you know, just as amazing people that their attitudes change. I actually know somebody else, Scott Hutchins, he's disabled and he ran for Congress with the Green Party. So I think once people see, um, you know, uh, okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much. On to the next question. I'll start with you, Arthur. Uh, New York City construction is what's called as a right. So people who have a lot and want to develop on that lot has a right to develop up to the existing floor area ratio. Do you think we should move away from as a right development to get more mandatory housing, mandatory inclusionary housing? And two is, do you think we need to reform ULP as we move forward on on housing projects in New York City?
You want that in one minute, huh? Um, first, first of all, I I don't think mandatory inclusionary housing is a good program at all. Um, it has, it has problems. I think it's just a way for people with developers with money to make money and gentrify neighborhoods. So I have problems with that part of it. I do think that that uh as a right development needs to be, the whole zoning in communities needs to be addressed and not by upzoning like like the city wants to do, the mayor wants to do in West Soho and Soho in general. It has to be, as, there has to be a capital plan, it has to be city money used to develop housing. Uh, there has to be a limitation on 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 using the existing ULP process just to to do whatever people want. And you know, we see a very prime example of that is over in the 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 building opposite Pier Forty, where uh because of, because of the 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 as of right development, we lost a thousand apartments that Corey Johnson promised to our community in return for them getting the air rights from Pier Forty. It has to disappear.
Thank you, Leslie. Two points, one is, should we continue with as a right development in New York City? Should it be, getting rid of it be a platform for mandatory housing in all construction projects? And do we need to reform the ULP process?
Um, let me, I'll start with the first part. Uh, so as of right, just because a builder has um an existing zone, uh, zoning doesn't mean that he should just build discretionary, anything he wants or she wants. Uh, I think this has to go back to resident community boards, um, resident input. Um, I think the ULP process, I I don't think the ULP process has to be totally overhauled, but I do think that there has to be more transparency. Um, I definitely think that uh with all building, housing, um, there are stuff like Arthur said with the upzoning. I think that there has to be a discussion between um residents, community leaders, and then the politicians and the builders who want to change it up. Um, because I just think now the inventory of where we're building is just getting smaller and smaller. So if you use the as of right, and just because he has an existing zone, doesn't mean he shouldn't go or she shouldn't go under the same. Thank you.
Thank you, Eric. Should should we continue with an as of right development posture in New York City? Or do we create something that requires mandatory inclusionary housing and should we reform the ULP process?
Yeah, I support all residential buildings to include affordable housing. I also support making changes to the ULP process to beef up the pre ULP planning. What happens now is by a time, by the time that a project is certified and before it even goes to the community, a lot of the details are already baked in and can't be changed. So the community is often left with reviewing a project that they can only tweak around the margins. But the process really needs to start a lot sooner and the community needs to be brought in at the ground level so we can, as a community, work together and come up with projects that make sense and that work for everybody.
Thank you. Phelan, the same question about as a right development, mandatory inclusionary housing and reforming ULP.
Yeah, thanks for the question. Well, you know, since community boards, you know, can only put together advisory resolutions, um, you know, I think it's important for them to be able to legitimize arguments, you know, for or against proposals um with the right evidence and the right information. And I think that right now, the current community board's infrastructure to fact check data on a lot of the information in on the buildings, um, you know, to form posing statistics, they don't really have it. So, you know, I I think that it takes time and education and dedication for a lot of these community board members, um, you know, who are who are dealing with zoning. Uh, it, they're also doing it for free. Um, and you know, another problem is now that we've posed uh term limits for these people. But I think there's a lot of inequity uh involved in the planning um of buildings, how they're built, who they're built for, and it all needs to be done with equity in mind.
Fine.
Thank you. Same question to you, Marnie.
So I say no to MIH. Um, rezonings, uh, you know, right now, we're in, we're in a time where the communities are fighting rezonings. Um, uh, these rezonings are displacing tenants and small businesses. Uh, the affordable housing that they're using as a carrot uh is never enough. It's like twenty percent or thirty thirty percent. And that it it it's not even really affordable for the people in the neighborhood. Um, and it drives up the rents, it makes the city unaffordable. Um, and I just feel like that's the mayor's sort of like housing policy is like this rezoning gentrification. Um, you know, it causes secondary displacement and, you know, it just makes the city like completely unaffordable. So actually, I, and I think the ULP process is broken. I think the community needs to have final say in all land use decisions, and I'm not exactly sure what that looks like. But right now, it's like this, where the elites, you know, the elites um make all the decisions. It should be flipped like this so the community can make a final say. Thank you.
Great. And Alita, the same question. As a right development, MIH and ULP, kind of where should we go and how should we move forward?
Lita, you're you're muted.
I'm sorry, there's my screen is acting funny. Sorry about that. Yes, no, um, ULP definitely needs to be reformed, period. Um, we need limitations on height. And why are hotels being built where the city desperately needs affordable housing? I mean, certainly hasn't worked here in Hell's Kitchen. We also need green spaces just as much as we need affordable housing. Um, when as of right is triggered by city planning and DOB, the community boards and elected officials need to be included. We can't ignore community institutional knowledge. I would organize and fight for development that works for District Three.
Thank you all. And you guys are doing great, by the way. We're, we're, you're moving through us. I really appreciate everyone's commitment for doing this. Uh, and so next question, I think hopefully is a quick question, maybe we can move through it fairly quickly and I'll start uh now with Phelan. Will you commit to have all your events accessible for people with disabilities?
Um, yes, absolutely, one hundred percent. Um,
Great, Eric. I'm sorry, did you want to say anything else? Sorry.
Uh, uh, yes. Uh, New York City, look, we all know that New York City is a actively hostile environment for disabled community members. So, um, yes, if I were elected, I would make every effort to make uh to make sure that we have ramps, elevators, braille signage, uh, lowered tables, um, sign language interpreters. Um, and uh, you know, I know that every disabled person in New York City is very unique. They all have their own individual needs. Um, just like non disabled people, we we want and need everything, when we want it, when we get it. So, yes, I will, I will absolutely make sure that happens. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Eric, same question. Will you commit to making sure all your events are accessible for people with disabilities?
Absolutely, and accessibility means more than just ramps and elevators. It means um visual aids, audio, audio, audio aids, braille when when needed. It means a whole range of options. And it's very important that all events not be exclusionary, closed hearing loops, whatever's needed to make it open to the entire community.
Thank you. Same question to you, Leslie.
This is the easiest question you gave us all day, all night, I think. Um, yes, absolutely, one hundred percent. Um, you know, I think it's hard for us to imagine um everyday things, those who are non disabled. Uh, I think it's hard for us to imagine the things we find simple every day can be really hard in this city to navigate for someone with a disability. Um, just think of how tiresome that would be every day when you can't get a subway or you can't hear something. Uh, so I do think, or I'm sorry, I do commit that I will make my events um disabled, accessible. Um, actually, our website uh is definitely now screen reader compatible with all tech. So we, we've taken the first step.
Thank you. Arthur.
Of course, and I would, you know, there are so many measures that that can be taken in so many times that one who is not disabled um is not, may not be aware of how somebody is excluded. So one of the things that I try to do in every event is consult with people like Mr. Schweinberg, who will always
who will always tell me that uh, you know, Arthur, you forgot about making it accessible for people with X disability. I think it, it, it isn't just for us to figure out, but we have to run those events and plan those events in consultation with people who really deal with the disabled community every day, and I would do that.
Alida, to you.
Obviously a yes for myself included. In fact, I have fought my own club, the Hell's Kitchen Democrats, when they wanted to have their Christmas party at a location that was not entirely accessible. And fought to include an additional space where people could come and enjoy themselves. I do think that so many people who have not struggled um, with disabilities are very negligent about how not only um, difficult physically it is for people, but how emotionally impactful it is when you know you're unable to attend an event or participate in something because you just can't make it and it's gonna hurt and um, can be embarrassing um, and shaming. And it's hard to admit that sometimes. So I don't wanna have to make people ask me if it's gonna be accessible. I want them to know that it will be and know that they'll always be welcome and there'll always be a space for everyone.
Thank you. Thank you, Marnie. Same question to you about your events and accessible.
Yes, definitely. I would make all my, all my events accessible. But um, just going on what Alida said, I have a friend um, who's blind and uh, she was talking about getting into the accessorized van and how it's really, it's really hard to actually get, get into the van because it's too high. Like she, you know, so she was talking about um, like how to repurpose those accessorized vans and other vans for her. So, but it is, it's true. It's, you know, it's very hard for a lot of people to understand kind of what the disabled go through unless you're disabled yourself. And um, yeah, I mean, it's definitely something that needs to be, to be addressed and I would definitely do that if I got elected, but definitely my events would be accessible.
And to you, Phelan, the question about um, access for people with disabilities to your events and activities.
I, I actually did answer the question. I've already been asked.
I'm sorry.
It's okay.
I apologize. You're right. You're right. No, you're right.
I mean, I'll take another stab at it if I didn't do it too well the last time.
So, uh, you're right, I'll move on. Uh, so the next question, I'm gonna start with Eric. Eric, uh, over twenty years, we've lost almost twenty hospitals in New York State. And most recently, Mount Sinai's proposed closing the Beth Israel Hospital. We've lost almost every hospital in Lower Manhattan. Do you support the downsizing or closing of our hospitals? And what do you think we should be doing to ensure people have access to adequate healthcare um, in your district and around the city?
Yeah, not only do I not support the downsizing, I think we need to do everything in our power, even if it takes legal action, civil disobedience. We cannot allow Beth Israel Hospital to downsize. And if anything made that obvious, it's what happened this spring when we needed every square inch of that hospital. I'm told that they are rethinking the, the decision to downsize, but we have to really ensure that that happens. We need more capacity, not less, and we need to invest. That's, that's urgent care, that's emergency services, but we need primary care, preventative care, FQHCs in the community that take all insurance, the uninsured, the undocumented, so people can have relationships with primary doctors and keep themselves healthy so they're not forced to go to the emergency room for healthcare.
Thank you very much. And Leslie, uh, what's your position? You know, mentioned over twenty hospitals have closed. Uh, we've lost hospitals in, in Lower Manhattan, now the post-closing of Beth Israel. What's your position on the closing or downsizing of that hospital? And what do you think we need to do around healthcare as a potential council member?
Um, no to downsizing, uh, and I'll tell you specifically why. Because where is this going to happen? It's going to happen in the economically depressed areas. That's what's going to happen. If um, a hospital or an organization decides to downsize, they're gonna go to profits, right? Where are the profits? And that is to transition to healthcare. That is the fundamental problem with healthcare. It is run by companies that are, that are really, they have a bottom line, they have a profit. So no, of course, I'm against downsizing because it will, it will definitely affect those in areas that probably can't afford elite healthcare. So as, as far as out there, I actually support the uh, New York Health Act. I, I do think we can have comprehensive health coverage for every New Yorker. I do think it could be, it could be moved out of uh, the private sector and into the public sector if only for a portion of it. Um, but to answer your question, no to downsizing.
Thank you. And as a co-sponsor of the New York Health Act, I really do appreciate that. Uh, Arthur.
I did not know, I, I, I did not know that exactly. I promise that wasn't a.
So Arthur, uh, Beth Israel, closing, downsizing, what's your kind of opinion on it and what do you think we should do?
Well, so as you know, um, maybe not everybody on the call knows, uh, I'm both a plaintiff and the litigator in a lawsuit that was filed back in two thousand and eight seventeen to address the beginnings of the downsizing of Beth Israel Hospital and the closure of various aspects of it. And in fact, I know that that lawsuit has slowed down the closure. And then this spring, I stood in front of Beth Israel Hospital on March nineteenth, just as the COVID epidemic was hitting New York City, with my mask on very sloppily and demanded and had press out there demanding that they, that they opened up the six hundred mothballed beds. And I was threatening to sue them over that when they made a decision to open the four hundred of those beds uh, for people with COVID. So I, I don't just have a position on it. I've been fighting about it. Uh, I'm against hospital consolidation. I'm against hospital closures. I'm for expansion of, of Medicaid in New York and the New York Health Act.
Thank you. Alida, what, what's your position on the downsizing of uh, Man's Island, Beth Israel site? And what do you think we should be doing about hospital access and hospital spaces in your district and across the city?
Well, we're in a medical desert here. I mean, we're serviced by financially predatory emergency clinics. That may be okay for the wealthy, but for the rest of us, not okay. And I was actually with my son hit by a car on the street, Forty Fourth Street. And when uh, the ambulance came, I expected them to take us to Roosevelt, what used to be Roosevelt, just a few blocks away. And instead, we had to go all the way across town. It took us an hour. And thank God he wasn't more hurt or it could have been a disaster. This is happening all over the city. Hudson Yards uh, had a hospital group that worked a contract with the luxury developers just to service tenants. I mean, that's insane. We need to work on the city budget and eliminate wasteful spending to put healthcare back in the people's hands. And I will work with the public advocate to ensure hospital access is available to all.
Thank you. Marnie, can, uh, same question around healthcare and closing, downsizing of Beth Israel.
Yeah, so that's true. Uh, Hudson Yards, I'm actually a hundred and sixty-seven steps away from Hudson Yards. It's right on the corner. But they apparently have their own hospital. So isn't that nice? Like, you know, they have their own hospital and not everybody is wealthy enough to, you know, be able to put their own hospital, like, you know, in their buildings. But I definitely would not downsize hospitals. Um, uh, I think people have to really fight to keep their hospitals. So they have to engage in direct action. And a perfect example is what happened with St. Vincent's Hospitals, which was converted into luxury development. Um, and you know, there's always a question, you know, um, did city council fight that hard? Did they fight hard enough? But now that St. Vincent's isn't there, like people who have a heart attack, uh, you only really get fifteen minutes to get to a hospital in order to survive that heart attack. So that's a problem. St. Vincent's isn't there. Um, and yes, it's gonna affect low-income people of color. Uh, and I think what we need is funding, we need to tax corporations with a one percent tax, refunding the stock transfer tax, taxing the wealthy. Seems like there's never a conversation about that.
Thank you very much. And the next question, we'll start with Leslie. So we have a climate crisis going on in the world, as I hope everyone on this Zoom knows about.
I'm so sorry. I, I actually didn't get a chance to answer that.
Oh, I'm sorry, Phelan. I apologize.
That's okay. Everyone always forgets about me.
I got you twice last time, so it's just making up for it.
Do you want to skip me on this one? Look, uh, we should not be privatizing public services um, or defunding them. And the money to build hospitals, to hire emergency room staff, nurses, doctors, it's there. We have the land to build more. It's there. Uh, the political will is a completely different story. And as a parent with a three-year-old, I know how important it is to have a hospital and to be able to have an emergency room. Uh, she falls all the time. She's crazy. Um, so I, I think whatever candidate you end up choosing, you're gonna need to choose a candidate that is not going to be motivated by anything other than equity for the community. Period.
Thank you then. I apologize.
No problem.
Been around a few times. I think I, uh, my brain's getting a little fried on this one. So uh, back to you, Leslie, uh, on the climate crisis that we're in. And so part of the conversation is how do we reduce the number of cars and trucks in Manhattan? We've heard a lot about busways and uh, bike, bike paths and having restaurants on the street. It's a lot of what the city council will be able to have influence on. What's your view about um, open restaurants, open streets, busways, bike lanes, and potential impact that it has on parking and cars?
Okay, that's a lot. You want me to start with the open streets first? I can do the open streets first. Is it, um, so right now, obviously, there's outdoor dining, um, because our restaurants, uh, along with our arts community, are the hardest hit due to COVID nineteen. And that's actually especially true in our district, uh, where so much of that restaurant uh, business is dependent upon tourism. So right now, we need PPP. I mean, we need funds. We need to get these, these restaurants. We're piecemealing now. We're piecemealing relief to them. But as far as the outdoor dining, if you want me to talk about the permanence of it, um, or?
I mean, you just, just tell us what your opinion is on kind of the use of public land and public space. Sorry.
So, yeah, so right now, I'll go for a topical thing.
They all impact the same. Bike lanes, bus lanes, cars, open restaurants, open streets. It all has an impact on our public use of space. Kind of what's your lens on all this? And as a council member, how would you, what would you, how would you move forward on these pieces?
Absolutely. Um, I think, let me, it's, it's, it's a big bite of the apple there. So let me, let me go forward here to what we're looking at. We are looking at congestion pricing, and I think that's going to help. Um, I think it's going to help traffic volume going down. Uh, I think it's going to help open the streets up a little more. Though the truth is, uh, we have to really um, get a hold of our Uber situation and our black car situation to open the streets up a little more. I do believe in bike lanes, but I believe in a very comprehensive grid of interconnect.
About ten extra seconds beyond, can we just take a, a thirty-second break? I, I, my battery is running low. You wanna just go on anyway?
Yeah, just keep going. I'll let, Leslie, and then we'll give everyone else a minute and a half for this question because it's a little longer. And you can go deal with your battery, Penny.
Okay. Um, so I do need, I do think we need to have a comprehensive grid, um, not a lane here, not a lane there. Because I do think uh, that right now, it's piecemealed together for bike lanes. And once we get a comprehensive grid, it will be safer for the bicyclists, it will be safer for pedestrians, and vehicles will actually know when to make a left, when to make a right, and where the bike lane is. So let me go back to the uh, open streets with the restaurants. I don't know if we should make those permanent. Um, right now, I think it's a temporary gap stop measure. But because what I'm afraid of is if these are permanent outdoor spaces, as they're talking about right now, the mayor is.
Leslie, wrap up.
Is way beyond.
Oh, I, okay. Sorry.
Thank you. And sorry, and then Arthur, you, we'll give you a minute and a half to answer this question as well.
Okay, um, so one of the, one of the, I'm gonna start with how do people go to work? How do people travel? In this city, eighty percent of the trips to work are done by buses and subways. Sixty percent of all the trips in this city are done by buses and subways, and most of the rest of them are done by people walking. So I think that, to me, those are the two most important things that we need to address. We need, people don't know that twenty years ago, the city put seven hundred million dollars a year into the MTA, into the New York City subway system and the bus system. And then they eliminated it, and then the state said, we're gonna eliminate it too. So to me, one of my key priorities is to put a billion dollars a year back from New York City into the subway system and the bus system and to make them free, to make them free. Because that's the only way to deal with the mass transit problems that we have in New York City. Second is, we need Uber control. We need to, the, the, the cap on Ubers was ridiculous. Right now, post-COVID, there are a lot fewer cars in Manhattan, and it's, it's because people are not taking trips to work in Uber. I'm also, it's critical to me that, that communities have to be involved in the planning. So one of the problems with the mayor's restaurant plan is he just imposed it without any concern for permanent plan. No concern for zoning, no concern for fire regulations, no concern for noise rules, no concern for the input of community boards. All of this has to be addressed. And the, and, and also, these kind of plans need to be addressed with environmental studies. We can't just do things because they sound good. Because what sounds good to Robert Moses or Polly Trottenberg may not be what is actually, is needed in this city just because they think.
Thank you, Arthur.
Okay. A minute and a half on this.
Yep, yep.
Okay.
Alida.
I'm sorry, could you reset the question? There was a lot in there.
Yeah, so it's really about the, the streets. Like, so we have a climate crisis here, right? And we're also talking about our public spaces. How do we reduce cars and traffic, which is part of causing climate change, but also manage the public streets, whether busways, bike lanes, oh, restaurants on the street versus parking for cars? And how do we all manage that in a city in your role of the council as a part of that process?
Well, I certainly um, support the open streets program. In fact, we applied for an open street right here on Forty Third Street, but were unfortunately denied. Um, I think it's a really great option. Um, uh, but you know, we're choking here in Hell's Kitchen. And we need to research reverse traffic to alleviate major thoroughfares known for choke points. Open streets are great when parks and gardens are limited. So I do support the Bikes Master Streets Plan. Also, open dining, outdoor dining. Um, I mean, my father, he has two restaurants and they wouldn't be surviving today if we didn't have it. I also frankly love it. Um, and it just really changes the landscape of our city. Makes it just a little bit more civilized. Um, we need to do research on Euler bills that would pull idling delivery trucks off the streets and into uploading zones. And I mean, there are a lot of ways that we could be more responsible about the emissions that um, Port Authority buses give off where I, I live just down the street from. Um, and I think giving uh, you know, tickets for idling buses and for um, these delivery trucks is really important to keep them all accountable. I've also supported and tried to initiate um, green roofs here where we live. And I think that that's an incredible project that we should consider around the city as well.
Thank you. Uh, so Marnie, does anyone question, you know, that we have, we have limited public space, bike lanes, bus, got it? You got the whole thing.
It is a hot mess. So um, I talked to a lot of the seniors in Penn South, and what they're really worried about is the bikes. And you know, I mean, obviously, everybody's talking about a more comprehensive plan. I totally agree with that. But also, I feel like a lot would be solved if everybody just followed the law. So I think, I think what those seniors are, are experiencing is that the bikes are coming in the other direction. They're too fast. I mean, I think everybody's just gotta slow down. But everybody has to kind of follow the law at the same time because the bikes don't follow the law. Maybe the cars are driving too fast. Some, sometimes the pedestrians are in the bike lanes. I think everybody has to, you know, kind of be more conscious about that. But maybe also what needs to happen with that is that there needs to be a public safety officer, like maybe in some of those areas that are really hyped, you know, high-traffic areas. Um, I think that would really help. But also with open streets, I think, you know, maybe not permanent, but temporary. I said, my God, the businesses have to survive. So I definitely say yes to. So I definitely say yes to that. And again, I always say that there should be a community control of land use. And that's what I have to say.
Phelan, your turn. We're not going to skip you this time.
Open spaces, yes, we need all the green spaces that we can get. I mean, if we think about what attracts tourists to our city, a lot of it is our green spaces. It is Central Park, it is the High Line. Open restaurants, we need to support our restaurant owners, but not just our restaurant owners, but we need to support the waiters, the immigrant waiters, the out-of-work Broadway theater actors who need restaurant jobs. So I do support it. Bicycles have always been a problem, but to be honest, I think what's even a bigger problem than bicycles are the rebel bikes, which are a little out of control. You know, people still aren't wearing helmets, people are going down the wrong ways. You know, they're not following the laws, and I think that we're going to have a lot more deaths from the rebel bikes. So I think those need to be, I think that needs to be looked at, and I think that licensing and permits are the way to regulate that. As far as Ubers, I mean, Ubers have always been a pain, and we always need to look to ways to make the environment better and think about our CO2 levels in New York City.
Thank you, and to you, Eric, on this, I think probably final question before we get into closings. We're kind of getting short on time, but, you know, where are you on this public space? Open restaurants, open streets, bike lanes, bus lanes? And how do you think we should move forward if you were in the council?
Yeah, for 60 years, we designed our cities and our country really around cars. And we turned over all of our street space to cars and trucks. And we starved public transportation, we starved our subways and buses. And I believe we're in a time of transformation on many different issues. And I think that this is one of the issues that we're seeing real transformation on. We're moving from a car-centric society to a people-centric society. And we need to design our streets for people, not cars. I saw the, what I think is the future on Little West 12th Street last month in the Meatpacking District. Jeffrey Los Prins one, the Meatpacking District, they created a complete street. And you should check it out. That is a street that is for recreation, dining, biking, walking, community gardening. And yes, a car when needed, when absolutely needed. But we could get out of a neighborhood, we could have neighborhoods where we breathe in fresh air, we can sleep with our windows open without having to hear honking. We can walk our kids to school without worrying, worry about traffic. These are things that changes that I believe we'll see in the relatively near future. But we have to make the decisions that will make this happen.
I want to thank you all for really, I know it was tough times to really squeeze all that in there. And I feel did a fabulous job to answer a lot of questions on a broad range of topics. And now we want to give it up, give you all the time to do a closing statement for each one of you. And we're going to start with Arthur. Everyone will get a minute to do their, their closing. And I want to thank you again for being with us and really having thoughtful comments and ideas about why you want to be the next council member in District 3. So we'll start with you, Arthur.
I just want to start by inviting everyone who's, who's watching, listening to go to www.athrforNYC.com, where I have scores and scores of proposals and plans to borrow from Elizabeth Warren. I, 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 as I said in the beginning of this, I want to be the organizer-in-chief. I see the city council person as being the organizer-in-chief for the council district to address all the myriad of problems that we are facing in this city and that need not gentle solutions, but aggressive, thoughtful, thought-out solutions in the future. I think that my endorsement today by Black Lives Matter, my endorsement by the Transport Workers Union, which represents those bus and subway workers, goes, it shows that my program is something that appeals to some of the most important constituencies in the city. And I hope people will support me when they make their decision later this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Alita.
Thank you so much for having me tonight. It's been my honor to get to know you all. As a single mother, coming from a mixed-race background, who's lived in Section 8 housing her entire life, born and raised in Hell's Kitchen, I feel I'm the best person to represent the diverse needs of this community. And I think it's so important that we come together and understand the challenges that each one of us face. And it's a lot easier to do it when you face those challenges yourself. I will be a councilperson for everyone. And I just hope that we can all truly come together and help to build back our city. Because I think COVID-19 has given us all an opportunity to rethink how we do things, to rethink how we do school, to rethink how we work, how we gather. And thank you very much. And please go to alitalafar.com to find out more.
Thank you. Marnie.
Marnie, you're muted. Marnie, you're muted.
All right, can you hear me now? Sorry. So I'm running because I want the average person to have a say in how policies are created in local government. And I'm running because I want to help people, and I want to make government work for all of us. As an activist for years, helping tenants, small businesses, and independent contractors have a say. I believe I have my priorities straight. I support housing for the homeless, to repurpose empty hotels for SROs with permanent leases. I want to preserve public housing. I want to plan, I want to plan for housing for people who are in need, not give to luxury development. I am running to expand a social safety net. And to learn more about me, go to marniefromcitycouncil.com. Thank you.
Thank you. Phelan.
Phelan, you're muted.
Sorry, I really appreciate being included in tonight's forum. The only thing I'd like to say is, I know that even if our views align, you might not know me as well as some of the other candidates. But there's a lot of people in our community, in my community, that are being taken care of due to systemic racism in our housing, our education, and in the economy. You know, for the past 120 years, there's never been a black councilman for District 3. So I think, you know, you have to ask yourself, why haven't things gotten better? And I think because there is a lack in political will to make things better for people in our community. Am I a policy expert? No, but that's why we have community boards, local democratic clubs, to advise representatives like myself and to help them make decisions about our lives, decisions that are deep-rooted in equity and fairness. And I'll represent our district if you choose to support my campaign with accountability and accessibility. And I'll always make decisions with you and my daughter in mind.
Thank you. And to you, Eric.
I want to thank 504 Dams in Palm for tonight's discussion. And thank you, Harvey, you did a great job tonight moderating. And I want to say to Alita and Marnie and Leslie and Phelan and Arthur, I really enjoyed tonight's forum, and it's really great to be here with you. I really look forward to a great campaign ahead. We, like it's been said before, we have, even though it's an incredibly difficult time, we have incredible opportunities at hand. And I really believe that we can achieve a city where you don't need a six-figure salary to succeed, where we can end the systemic racism that permeates every element of American life with schools that prepare all our kids for tomorrow, with small businesses, not chain stores and empty storefronts. So I think we can achieve all these things and much, much more if we have the right leadership at this next phase of New York City. Thank you so much, everybody.
Thank you. And Leslie, thank you.
Thank you so much. So for the past years, I really have fully dedicated myself to the betterment of my community. I'm a member of Hudson River Park Trust Task Force, our district's budget task force, Community Board for's executive committee. And I spent over, actually, 20 years as an investigative journalist fiercely defending the First Amendment and giving a voice to those who do not have one. So this also makes for a good representative, and is part of the reason I'm uniquely qualified for this position. As District 3 council member, I will continue to work for the underserved and fight for progressive change. We need to be vigilant and protect and advance the members of our community who need it most, our strong LGBTQ-GNC community, the backbone of our district, people of color, those with disabilities, seen and unseen, women, the Asian, and many others. This is the time I think we need a representative who understands and empathizes with her constituents, and I'm ready to work hard to find solutions for the issue facing our district and be proactive when it comes to the future. Thank you for having me.
Yeah, thank you all again. And for those who are watching, we are now going to quickly go through all those questions with my councilwoman, Carlina Rivera, who's the only candidate on tonight for District 2. So you're all, all the candidates are welcome to listen to Carlina and respond to some of these questions. But I really do, again, appreciate everyone, your commitment to your community. And one of you is going to be the next council member to serve this great neighborhood. So thank you all.
Thank you so much.
And so Carlina.
Great. And thanks to everyone for participating. Honestly, this was an impressive forum. Thank you.
And so the opening is just a two-minute, who you are, why you want to get reelected, for people who don't know you well.
And you should describe yourself briefly for the people who are visually impaired or on captions.
Absolutely. Everyone can hear me okay, though?
Yep, we can hear you fine.
Okay, okay. Thank you so much for having me tonight. I want to just, I'm very, very thankful to be here. So hi, everyone. My name is Carlina Rivera. I am the councilwoman for District 2. I have long black hair. I am wearing a navy blue blouse today. I'm wearing my glasses. And I'm currently sitting at my desk in my apartment with my dog at my feet, speaking to all of you. I guess I want to start with saying that I have to thank my staff and my team who has been working around the clock to make sure that our district has the resources that we've needed during the COVID-19 pandemic and to hold our city health leaders accountable through my sharing of the committee on hospitals. But working tirelessly isn't new for me or my team. As a city councilwoman, I've had the tremendous honor over the past three years or so to represent my community where I'm born and raised in the Lower East Side and some wonderful neighborhoods that include East Village and Flatiron, Rose Hill, Kips Bay, Murray Hill, Gramercy Park, and, and again, amazing community on the east side. So in my work as a councilwoman, I've successfully fought to pass countless pieces of legislation to support housing, small businesses, to really make sure we have safe streets. I am just one of 12 women in a 51-member body. I'm one of only two Latinas in the council. And in that time, I've also chaired three important bodies. One is the Census Task Force, the Women's Caucus, and I'm currently the chair of the Committee on Hospitals, as I mentioned. But just so you know, when you choose hopefully to reelect me, I have plans to fight to do a lot more. I'm going to fight to expand on the innovative community land trust model that I've championed and give affordable housing developers an equal playing field against real estate speculators through my community opportunity to purchase act, or what we call the COPA Act. I'll fight to bring a Green New Deal to public housing, to reinvest in NYCHA, and the whole idea of social housing at the federal, state, and city level, building off of.
Two minutes is what you had.
Is it? Is it over?
Yes, it is.
That's okay, that's okay. I actually look forward to answering questions most of all.
Yeah, so we'll just do a speed round between the two of us on questions, so.
Okay.
So as you know, less than a quarter of the subway stations are accessible for people with disabilities. What specifically will you do to increase access to public transportation if reelected to the council?
Okay, well.
Just so you know.
How much time is for questions?
One minute.
Okay, all right. I just want everyone to know that I've had the experience of standing out there with a friend waiting for access a ride on a cold, cold holiday night, and it never showing up or showing up incredibly late, and that is unacceptable. First and foremost, we need to acknowledge that transportation is a social justice and equity issue. Far too many subway stations are not accessible to New Yorkers with disabilities. That's why I fought with advocates to secure new elevator entrances at Sixth Avenue, hopefully to become a reality, and a feasibility plan for another entrance on Third Avenue. But one-off fights are not a long-term solution. What would really help is if we could finally decide who controls the MTA. The governor and the mayor always put, they play the blame game, they point fingers. But we all know we need real investment in that. I think we need to put this under control of one of them. And then if they do not dedicate capital to the accessibility improvements that we need, we'll know exactly who to vote out. Beyond the subway, we have to improve bus speeds. My district is very dependent on the bus system, and we have to modernize buses to provide better access for all. And of course, really make sure that it's a green fleet. And the last thing I'll say is we need a permanent open streets program, which I'm pursuing through legislation now, that puts seniors, those with disabilities, and those without access to open space first and foremost.
So thank you. As you know, we have a crisis in public housing, the lack of repairs with over 400,000 residents. Do you support RAD, and what would you do to combat the disinvestment in public housing?
I think we have to keep public housing public. I went up to Albany earlier this year with Vocal, with Good Old Lower East Side, with CVH, with the Housing Justice for All Coalition and other organizations to lobby Albany for more public housing capital dollars. Once again, if you didn't notice, the state did fail to take action, providing $0, $0. So they did not take our demand seriously. And I certainly think that we need to be in active discussions with this new administration that's, that's taking over in Washington. Of course, with the new HUD director, to pursue any and all ways we can repurpose existing federal HUD dollars to fix NYCHA. We don't need them to just keep following kind of the Obama playbook on RAD. But we need Albany putting up funding through new taxes, through new ideas. I mean, that's the only solution right now to generate the revenue that we need. I also want to expand social housing, not just fix it. I think one way we could do that is through a public bank for New York City that would raise funding for public infrastructure, like community land trusts that I've been a champion of. And immediately term on any RAD projects in the pipeline. I think we have to give tenants a direct voice, and I'm willing to explore that through legislation.
Thank you. And as you know, I voted against that budget because we didn't have funding for NYCHA. So thank you for raising that.
Thank you, Assembly Member.
So we've heard a lot this past budget around defund the NYPD. What does that mean to you, and what would policing look like for your vision of the city?
Well, as the only person, I guess, on this call who was in the room and made a difficult decision to vote against the budget, I view this issue as a matter of reinvestment, not disinvestment. I certainly voted against the budget. We didn't do enough to address the failings of the NYPD, including fixing the broken process to fire and prosecute dirty cops. And we saw how long it took to fire Officer Francis Gil Garcia, who kneeled on the neck of Donnie Wright and Avenue D in my own district. And we have to implement a real plan for accountability when it comes to overtime and move more of the responsibilities that are left to police to other competent agencies and just really reimagine public safety. And I think we saw a little bit of that today with mental health response and the proper way to do it, not with police. I think one thing we have to think about going into next year's budget is to just effectively champion programs that make our community safer. And that includes things like the Stand Up to Violence Program that's currently at health and hospitals, which connects directly gunshot victims to build bridges with the community and has dramatically lowered crime rates.
Thank you. So, you know, over 60% of people with disabilities are unemployed or underemployed in New York City, New York State, and around the country, even though we passed the ADA over 30 years ago. What can you do in the council to increase employment opportunities for people with disabilities, as specific as you can?
Sure. I know that people with disabilities have had a difficult time finding work. I think one of the biggest issues is access to workforce development opportunities specific to them. I think there are great organizations in the city that work on these kinds of programs in terms of job skills building, and we have a great employment network. I know someone mentioned bringing something like that to Chelsea. We have the Lower East Side Employment Network. It directly, uh, directly funding partnerships between employment and education organizations. So I think we can expand something like that. And we also need to make sure that, that our Human Rights Commission is fully funded to ensure that they're monitoring cases of discrimination in, in, in this, just to shed light on the issue. And I think that we need to ensure that people with disabilities can even get to work. So I mentioned Accessa Ride. I think we have to expand that and e-help programs and make sure that we're looking at other direct transit programs and funding them and making sure that they're truly inclusive.
Thank you. I'm sorry we're going so quickly through them, but.
Okay.
You're doing great. Um, so, uh, there's, we, in New York City, we have as a right development. So if you are within your FAR and you own a piece of land, you can build as a right according to the FAR. Do you believe New York should continue it as a right development? Should we create, get away from that and do mandatory inclusionary housing, all development projects? And what do you believe we should do around ULRP and whether we should reform it at all?
Um, I think the easy answer to this is we need to revisit our entire city's map. It's holistically, uh, a long-term kind of top-to-bottom approach. I also, also think we have outdated, I outdated 1970s era zoning rules in place. I think we need a citywide master plan, not just for zoning, which we should modernize, but also include planning for transportation, healthcare facilities, parks, and sanitation infrastructure. I think we should commit to a borough-by-borough plan to bring our map into the 21st century with communities, always communities and advocates always at the head of the table, and deep affordability as a main goal in every project. In terms of ULRP, I think we need to look more for transparency prior to certification of projects to force the city and the developers to the table earlier, not when it's too late, which is what happens in typically the ULRP process. The city council has less resources than the mayor's office, and so I have found through this process that they pretty much just tried to wear us down and get us to come to a decision, and we certainly need.
Thank you. Uh, uh, hopefully a simple question. Will you commit that all your events be accessible for people with disabilities?
Of course, absolutely. Uh, we try to make sure all our events are as accessible as possible. Uh, since COVID, we've worked to get visual assistance at our events, and we just upgraded our system to actually have better subtitle capabilities. I also think we need a larger fund at the city level to ensure that the council members have a dedicated budget for even ASL aides or interpreters. So it's so expensive right now, and we don't, we aren't really able to provide that. We just don't have the resources. So I'm hoping that we can do something like that. And of course, I will always defer to my disability, uh, community allies. And I've worked with Mike and Elizabeth and others here on how we can do better with the few resources that we are given.
Thank you. Uh, so as you know, a few years ago, Beth Israel, Mount Sinai proposed closing or downsizing Beth Israel Hospital. Do you support the downsizing of that facility? And what do you think we need to do in this time of, uh, the needs for healthcare in our community, knowing that we've lost over 20 hospitals across the city?
Uh, try to be brief. Um, I know there was some good news. I think Eric, uh, uh, mentioned earlier about Mount Sinai reconsidering their plan for MSBI, which is great. Uh, I mentioned I'm Chair of the Hospitals Committee. I was on the phone at the height of the pandemic, fighting with executives of private hospitals to get them to reopen beds and to reopen some of their closed facilities. And that advocacy directly resulted in hundreds of beds reopening at Beth Israel on Roosevelt Island and elsewhere. Um, I, I mean, I'm going to continue to fight for Beth Israel, just like I did before at countless rallies that you and I were at, Assembly Member, and community briefings with folks like Anthony Feliciano, who has been a guiding light for me throughout this whole process. The, the, the fact of the matter is, is that there are 6.4 beds per 1,000 people in Manhattan and 1.5 beds for 1,000 people in Queens. There is no equity. So we have to rethink this entire thing, and I think COVID really shed a light on that.
Thank you. And hopefully the last question from me will be, so our public, our public land, you know, we have a, we're, we're in the middle of a climate crisis in the world, and our city, you know, has too many cars, too many trucks. Uh, how do you feel about bike lanes, bus, busways, open streets, open restaurants? And how do you manage all this in, in a city that we're living through and your role as a councilmember to support all that?
I think it's no secret that I've probably been the biggest champion in the council on reimagining the use of our streets. So besides the, the council speaker, I think we've seen that play out through the increases of not just bike lanes, but also through the Open Streets Program that exists today because of my legislation. Initially, the mayor was opposed. I'm working on legislation to make that permanent. I'm also happy that innovative ideas, I think, like the 14th Street Busway have been an absolute success. I know it took us a while to get here, and some people have been, you know, have converted. Um, so I'm glad that we're able to do that, and that'll be a model for other places in the city. Um, I think as part of the future of open streets, we need to think about how this program addresses issues of inequity in open space. Uh, we've seen some great examples of, of great open streets, but again, I think it always comes back to where is it hardest for people to access that open space to take a walk, or do they have a long walk to get to the park? Um, I think what I'm most proud of in my advocacy has been my proven track record of working for all communities on transportation issues, including through securing additional elevators at subway entrances, preserving bus stops on the F-14, and adding additional signage to alert cyclists at crossings near senior centers and our naturally occurring retirement communities. So I do believe we need to.
Thank you. And Carlina, sorry that was so rapid fire.
That's okay. Okay.
And so just your closing, your one-minute closing to folks on the Zoom.
Sure. I just want to thank, um, 504. I want to thank Palm. I know that 504 specifically, we've worked, um, with Art Beyond Sight and, and 504 on business accessibility education programs. I hope that from that, in addition to everything that I've mentioned today in my work around housing, healthcare, food, and education, that I have kept true to my values of addressing our challenges through a lens of racial and economic justice. I think you can see that I'm fighting for New York that really dares to pursue big ideas and solutions, not just those that are going to help us recover from this crisis, but be ready for the next one. And so I dare anyone who tells me that New York is done, or it's a ghost town, or it's disappeared, to come to my district. We'll show you that we're just getting started, and I would be really proud and humbled to have your support to continue in this capacity and, and, and be your councilwoman for District Two.
Well, thank you, Carlina, for being here. Thank you for answering all those great questions. Uh, I, I know everyone here really appreciates it. And so I think my portion of this is over. Uh, I want to thank 504 and Palm asking me to moderate this event. And I'll turn it back over to Mike or to Penny to, for you guys to take over from here.
Well, I, I would just like to say one thing before, Mike, I hope you, you, you were looking at chat maybe, and you could find a question, because we have 12 minutes or 11 minutes, but I just wanted to say to everyone, and thank you all. Thank you all. I thought you were brilliant. I thought you did a great job, and I hope that you found it fair and equitable. Um, um, we, I, we would like, the Palm members would like to be able to make an endorsement. So I would just ask that when this ends, that the Palm members stay on, in the Zoom, and we will discuss the, um, candidates, and if we can, make, make an endorsement. Uh, only voting members can endorse, and so you're going to have to give me your, you know, names and vote written down and emailed in so that I can be sure that the, uh, that the people who are entitled to vote are the ones who are voting. So Mike, you never got to speak in the beginning?
True.
And I don't know what happened to you. Do you have, was there anything in the chat that we could use? I haven't had time to look.
So, I'm not sure what's creating this feedback. Hold on.
Everybody who's not Mike, if you'd also just mute.
How can I mute and speak at the same time? I'm confused.
No, you're, you're good, Mike. I'm asking everyone who's not you to mute, to, to cancel out that echo.
Thank you. Now, no, no, that didn't do it. Who is still on? Penny, are you muted?
Everyone's muted, Mike. I think it might be an issue with your mic and your speakers feeding back to each other.
Okay, hold on, please. Okay, is that any better? Yeah, it's a little better. Oh, no, 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 no. Kill it over here. Okay, now how am I? Yes, because I gotta see if I can hear. That's the problem. I can't hear on my laptop, so I put on my cellphone. But you can hear me okay? Okay, fine. Uh, so, most of the questions have come from Kathy Collins. And they seem to all be directed, am I right, Kathy at Carlina? Do you now want to know what's happening on the west side of town on anything? Kathleen, can you say something in the chat to let me know if I'm going to ask all of these questions of one candidate? Or how, how do you want to work that?
Well, I, I tried to answer about the curb cuts. I didn't see any other questions. I'm sorry.
Okay, all right. You had just, so, but she continues on about that. So, uh, she wanted to know uh, why the blind had to sue for traffic signals that are accessible.
Yeah, and also about the, the, the signal. And I, I responded, um, you know, actually, even just winning the case doesn't necessarily get the curb ramps installed in our communities. You actually need a tremendous amount of follow-up to make sure that DOT does the work to include them. And at a grade level, that, that is, that is, um, helpful. So I, I absolutely think that it is unacceptable and it is wrong for any community to have to sue for what is fundamentally a civil rights issue. And so whether it's getting elevators at our, our local train stations or some of the signaling for the disability community, I'm, I'm sorry that it, it has come to that. I hope that potentially with new leadership and your advocacy, and hopefully even this brand-new council that would essentially come in, we can push further to do the right thing. Some of it's at our level, some of it's at the state and federal, but either way, I think we have to work together. And, um, I, I think we can really do some, some great things, um, really united.
And I'm aware that the majority of, I'll say, our, our district, because I live here, um, has really great curb ramping, particularly downtown. Now we've got to move it uptown. I think that's what Ca- Kathy is most concerned about, is that, you know, uh, we achieve equity with regard to curb ramps throughout your district, throughout the city, throughout the country. But, uh, you know.
Yeah, absolutely. And we put, um, hundreds of thou- I see she has some money signs there. So we've put hundreds of thousands of dollars into street repaving, which included, um, improving some of those curb cuts. And we try to do it. I try to be very equitable when it comes to the district. Clearly, there are some more higher needs areas, and there are families living in poverty. So I always try to operate first with trying to lift those families out of what are very, very tragic situations, and then really distributing these funds to look at our food pantries, our schools, and of course, um, supporting local healthcare access.
Thank you. Now, let me just say this, that, you know, this is the first time we've done this, and, uh, Palm primarily provided the technology and everything. I was not aware that of issues like, you know, video being cut off and all that. Um, but, uh, I've also asked for anybody else who's asking questions to please include, uh, your email in case we don't get to them, and no one has done that. And actually, no one's asked a question but Kathleen.
Yeah, there was another question about increasing funding for the mayor's office for people with disabilities and kind of what people's position on that.
Go ahead. Anybody? That's for everyone, right? That question, do you imagine Harvey, is that for?
Yeah, that was a question that came from, from the chat. It was for, I think, for everyone. But.
Well, as, as I said, um, when, when I spoke about, uh, expanding the New York City Human Rights Commission and making enforcement far more, uh, uh, available and far more aggressive in the city, that, that has to be a part of it, because we put so little money into so many people in this city. We put so much more money into, into things like the police, uh, that, you know, it's, it's unbelievable. I mean, if, uh, whatever percentage of, of people in New York City have disabilities and need them addressed in employment, need them addressed in transportation, need them addressed in healthcare, that don't get it, and the city does so little to enforce it. So yes, it's another question, another place where a lot of money needs to be redirected.
And forgive me, um, Harvey and, um, Penny, I don't see other questions. Am I missing something?
No, I think that's it, Mike, and I think we're kind of at the end of our time anyway. So I do think we should thank all our candidates for being here.
Indeed. This has been a remarkable turnout. Everyone showed up. We appreciate that. And so many people have participated by listening and asking questions that, you know, being engaged and involved. Um, I understand some are not even affiliated with either club, so we're happy to provide this forum for everyone. Um, and thanks again. I think we'll close out a little bit early. Uh, Penny, do you have any closing comments? Oh, wait, well, before we go in, first of all, Harvey, great job. Unbelievable. Uh, you know that every question was, came from Harvey. We had no, uh, real input. Uh, he developed all these questions, kept them very secret. I was fascinated to hear his questions. I know he's poured a lot of work into this himself, and thank you very much.
Yes. Thank you.
Now. I'm sorry. Go ahead, Harvey.
I said, just thank you for letting me be a part of it. I was happy to, to help.
Thank you kindly. And then the incredible work of Penny. Penny, this wouldn't have happened without you pulling all those strings together. Thank you kindly.
Thank you. I appreciate it. But now I am very uncomfortable with doing a discussion and a vote of the Palm members at this point. I, if, um.
Right. I think anybody who's not a Palm member has got, and if you are a Palm member and you happen to be a candidate, also, please, say bye-bye.
All the candidates. You, and thank you, and you've been a pleasure to work with. And, um, I, you know, at this point, I would like to just be addressing Palm.
Good night, everyone. Thank you.
Bye. Thank you, Penny. Thank you so much. Thanks, everyone. Good luck out there.
Thank you. Okay, all right.
Let me see. My host's kombucha. Anybody know?
How many people do we have left here? Us?
Not me. Ivan, Ivan, I'm sorry, buddy, you gotta go. You're, I, I don't think you've joined Palm, did you? No, okay. Louis, say goodnight, Louis.
So Mike, it looks like you're taking care of our, our guests.
I'm trying.
You, because, okay, because you have the power to do so. I, I think it, you've, you've.
Oh, do I? Oh, look at that. I have the power. I did not. Someone, who, would, someone, um, unmute themselves and identify yourself, 3478911153. Who are you?
I can try to unmute them by force. I'm unable to. It appears they're on a phone. Hmm, Gina's not a member of Palm. I know some of these folks are not. This is Arthur's mother. I don't know if Arthur's mother is a member of Palm. Mrs. Schwartz, I don't think so.
I saw that Gil, Gil was here earlier, and he's.
He's here. Dr. Gil's iPad.
Good, good, good.
Michael Rock, you're a member?
Eight-nine. Michael Rock?
All right, Michael. Michael Rock. Please unmute yourself. Tell us if you are a Palm member.
Can't seem to unmute Michael.
Yeah, I've asked him to unmute three times. So can you boot? So, oh, I see.
Yeah, I made him a co-host just to see if he's having an issue in that way. No, I think he's still okay. Bye, Michael. Looks like you're not, uh,
okay.
Not a member.
Still there. That's weird.
I got, I'll remove him now.
Do we have enough people? Do we have enough people to? Do we have enough people, do we have enough people to make a decision? There are one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, and this telephone number. Seven people?
Tell me how, I have to, Louis is not leaving either, and I don't see how, says I can put him in the waiting room, and I'll do that at least, but...
I can remove Louis then, if he's not meant to be here, yep, he's gone.
Okay, so now it's just one, two, three, four, five, six of us, Brad Harris.
But Harvey left?
Harvey left.
He's a Palm member.
He is a Palm member.
Well, so is Arthur, but of course, we can't have candidates, right?
I don't think we can.
He would probably recuse himself.
Yeah, so, can you unmute all the people who are still here?
Yes, I can. Just a moment here, I'll just, there's Dr. Gil is unmuted, and Scott, and Brad, and Peter. Is Elizabeth Axel a member of Palm?
I don't know, Elizabeth, I'm sorry, this is only for progressive action of Lower Manhattan.
She's not in yet, she's just entered the waiting room, that's why I was asking.
Okay, I'll text her separately, and sure.
Is she a member? Maybe she's a member, I don't know all the members.
No, no, she's not.
Okay, so Brad is the only one, I can't seem to forcibly unmute, everyone else is unmuted.
This is a very, very small group.
And I'm gonna now allow participants to unmute themselves now that we are in a smaller group. So, participants left, you can mute and unmute yourselves now.
Okay.
Can we get the video back on?
Yeah, can't you put your video on?
Really? But we should turn off the captioning right now, because nobody needs it, you mean that anybody could, could...
It says only the host can, oh, back on, good, okay.
Okay, and Scott, and Peter, and then...
Thank you, thank you, at least we know the caption works.
Yeah, you guys are all good with your video.
Can we, I'm sorry, so sorry, but can we turn off captioning? No one here needs it, and anybody who is on, yeah, for instance, that was Elizabeth calling me to tell me that she was off, but she could still see the caption.
Captions, brilliant, let me make sure that I've taken care of that, give me just one sec.
Thank you, Steve. Oh, and I didn't offer thanks to you, I'm so sorry.
No, 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 no.
We wouldn't have captioning.
No, I'm happy to volunteer, give me just one sec to make sure that caption is off.
Okay.
Alright. Alright, so we have two votes to do, there are only six of us, yes, Scott, what?
So I'd like to just make a statement first.
Yeah, yeah, that'd be good.
Um, I am quite upset by the conduct of this meeting in which someone arbitrarily decided to disable the chats and videos after there were complaints about the disabling of, um, of the videos. So all of a sudden, the chats were disabled, and there was really no reason for that. It did not take attention away from the candidates. Beyond that, I would also note that I was told that questions were being solicited by Palm members for Harvey to read tonight, and in fact, that apparently was not the case, that Harvey came up.
I answered that second, the second, well, first of all, about the videos, I don't know anything about the videos. I don't know why people were not on video, I have no idea. As far as the chat, I didn't know that the chat stopped working, but you know, I was of course busy with timing. But now, with respect to the questions, I had asked for questions from you and from Peter and from Gil as the people who were most often at our meetings, most active. And then it was decided that it wasn't going to be up to me to make decisions about the questions, because it wouldn't be fair to the candidates. I mean, it might not be fair to the candidates, so instead Harvey said that he, you know, he would make up all the questions, he would study the issues that are important to 504, and then, you know, go over, he did discuss some of the issues that are important to Palm, and you had raised the 14th Street issue and transportation, and he did address those. Those were questions that were addressed. Now, Peter had talked about housing, and those were addressed. And Gil, I can't remember what you had said, but I think, I don't know, are you unhappy with?
Very happy, I'm delighted with how it went.
Okay, so I don't quite understand why you would be angry.
And I will say, I thought the format, the questions and the forum was a success, and I have no complaints, in terms of my question, it was addressed, and that's not my issue. I just think that there's a problem with these forums in general, because there should be more of an opportunity for participants to ask questions. DID allowed people to ask questions, instead, it's all being put on one person's shoulder. But anyway, I've said my piece, I have an opinion.
Scott, I asked you to think about this in terms of a live event, and if you were in a hall where all this was happening, you wouldn't be able to shout out your questions while the people were speaking anyway, right?
But the moderator can make sure that only one person asks the question at a time, and that's what happened this week at DID, where they had more people.
But did you see that we only had three minutes left after all the participants? We had, you know, a pretty high number of candidates to review, and they each had eight questions to answer. And so that took almost all of the two hours. And so if you were at a live forum, you would have only had three, the audience, you know, if it closed on time, would have only had three minutes to ask their questions anyway, because the question and answer period between Harvey, the moderator, and the candidates took all of the two hours minus three minutes.
I mean, I'm prepared to move on, but I just hope that there will be real town halls in which the public actually can ask questions, as opposed to club meetings. There was one club that had just a club president asking every single question. I think it's gonna be voting, and the public has to be able to ask questions. But anyway, I've said my say, I do have an opinion on the endorsement, so.
Okay.
I love, I love Scott's searching points of view, I rarely agree with him. On Facebook, he knows, I like him tremendously, almost uniformly. He's talented and insightful, but he has criticized that when we had the 19 candidates, he didn't like the way we did it, either I thought it was wonderful then, I thought tonight was extraordinary. Only God is perfect, and none of us are God, we may have made a mistake or two.
Alright, so I would like to discuss whether we have enough people to endorse?
First, I don't, I don't think our rules prohibit our doing it, we've never had a minimum.
We do not have a quorum, we don't have to meet quorum of any sort?
No, nothing in our, nothing in our rules requires a specific number.
Okay, Peter, Peter, no, Peter, go ahead, Peter.
Well, yes, first I should say that I am not entitled to a vote on this, because I have failed to pay my dues, and I hope that I can still have a voice here.
Afterward, you've always paid your dues, you know, pay them and we'll count your vote.
Alright.
Promise to give it, and you could.
But I think, regardless of whether I can vote or not, I think that one forum is not sufficient for us to make an opinion. The... This was a difficult forum for the candidates. They had very little time to answer the questions, and it's still early, very early in the campaign. There may be other developments that will come, and we have to see how the city is going to get out of the COVID crisis. There's a lot of issues which still have to be discussed. I don't think we should make a decision tonight.
You know, that's funny, that's early. That's what happened at the DID forum also, they decided to hold off until their next meeting. We haven't been having very many meetings, I'm, I'm, you know, these candidates would really like to, they need to have endorsements, they need them. Now, it doesn't mean that we must give them now, but it's a boost to a campaign to get an endorsement, so.
Yes, it is, I agree.
So, um, I, I don't, I really don't...
I'm for endorsing, just in case my point of view is not well-understood. I think whoever we endorse needs a clear signal from us that we're behind him or her in order to go forward.
Let me make, let me offer a compromise, wait, wait, Penny. At 504, when we used to have our forums in every borough, then whoever was present at that screening would be called the screening panel, and they would prepare a report with a recommendation for who they thought should be endorsed by the club. And then the club decided in a, the next regular meeting by vote, who they would endorse. But, so we would be the screening panel in this case, and we, and we can offer, you know, our...
Who's gonna prepare this?
Recommendation.
By vote, we can offer our recommendation for...
I like that.
Okay, who is gonna write up what happened tonight?
What about Michael?
If you don't wanna, you don't even wanna see what I would come up with. If I can, I did take a lot of notes, but I need to confer with others, because I'm not, I certainly didn't get it all.
I didn't take any notes, because I was very busy with the timing, but the captions are available.
Actually, you guys, the chapter here has, you're about to own the whole recording, the whole video too, so you can make that available to membership of both the clubs. As soon as Zoom encodes the video, that'll be available as well for membership to watch the whole thing.
Very, very helpful, thank you very much. How large a file is that, Stephen?
I'm not sure how large it is to download, but you can throw it on Google Drive, so folks can just stream it if they so desire, if they don't want to download it, it's probably a few hundred megabytes, I would assume.
Right. Okay, well, that's good to know. So do we want, do we like the idea of coming up with a screening panel recommendation?
I'm for it, and I recommend Michael consolidate our points of view.
How about Peter, maybe Peter could consolidate our points of view.
Well, no, I couldn't, I really couldn't. But, let me suggest a compromise here. I would suggest that perhaps we could make a revocable endorsement.
It's always revocable, I agree.
Recommendation, that's what we're doing.
Oh, okay.
Screening panel recommendation, so it's not binding, it's just because we were there, and, you know, we are giving our impression of the evening, and it's not binding in any way, it is a recommendation by the screening panel.
And then we take it up at our next meeting.
Yeah, I like this, I'm willing to go through the captioned material and take out pieces that would be, um, you know, pretty much state what people's positions were, and, and, and provide that. So it would be kind of a summary via the captions. And as well to, you know, somehow, Stephen, if you could tell me how to tell people, you know, we'll put it on Google, whatever, and I could tell people how to get to the entire two-hour meeting, and tell people that we are going to have a vote at our next meeting, how does that sound?
Great, if you're willing to do it, Penny, before you said you didn't want to, but if you're willing...
Write up all my own stuff, I'm just gonna, you know, take out...
Highlights?
Highlights, yeah, Scott, you were gonna say something?
So my question is, how many more people, members are there that are eligible to vote? I mean, I have a definite preference based upon what I heard tonight and what I heard at DID, combining that both of those forums together.
What do you think?
My own preference?
Yeah.
And I switched as a result of listening to tonight's. My preference, which may be disappointing to Palm, is, is for Eric, because I find, well, let me explain, I have major problems with Arthur. I thought all of his lawsuits on the busway suggest that that is the wrong thing to do in the city council to be, even though he insists in the forums that he supports mass transit and would support free mass transit, where he would get the funding for that, when this city of New York has a multi-billion dollar deficit. And I think those lawsuits suggest that he would be a NIMBY council member in the city council. Eric talked about people's centrism, away from auto-centrism. He said, an independent CCRP with disciplinary decision authority over the police, no one else has said that. Residency requirement for new police hires, no one else has said that, and he has the experience. He is apparently the frontrunner, that of course should not be the consideration, because, um, but, but, but Eric is my preferred candidate at the moment.
Okay.
May I speak?
Go ahead, Gil.
Thank you.
Yo, yo, yo.
Scott has every right...
Alright, what, Penny?
Every right to his point of view. And that's part of our democratic process, we are nothing else democratic. So I'm going to offer another point of view, which is different from Scott's by about a hundred and...
He's a member. Stephen, let Nestor in, he's a member.
Okay, I don't know how to do that.
Sorry, guys, I was in another one, so I didn't, I didn't...
May I, may I complete what I was saying kindly?
Sure.
Wait, 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 Gil, wait, wait until Nestor's, okay, he's in, so he can hear you.
No, I'm muting.
Unmute yourself, Nestor, welcome.
That's dead right now, thank you.
Okay, go ahead, Gil, with your...
Thank you, I have known Arthur and Eric ever since they came into public view. I'm eighty-three years old, I've been a New Yorker all of my life. I've lived at Two Fifth Avenue as a rent-stabilized tenant for the last fifty-two years. In Manhattan, I was born, in a Manhattan hospital.
Can you talk about your opinion of...
Arthur and I, I am, I am.
No, you're talking...
Scott talked a long time, so I have a little bit of time. I, and Arthur and I were both appointed to the community board in the same year in the nineteen-eighties. Arthur has been around the block for fifty years and has a depth of experience that everybody that I know loves Eric, he's very likable. So is George Valenakis, Doctor Troy. There is no question that Eric is a nice guy. I do not doubt that for a moment, I see him as a lightweight compared to Arthur, who has done so many things over the last fifty years. I accept that Scott has another point of view on what Arthur believes and values. I think he's just incorrect, but that's the democratic process. Arthur would hit the ground running as a District Three councilperson on day zero, as he didn't even make it into the council chambers, but as he approached it, he would know everybody and everything, and would start to make District Three a better district. And the other two, because they work together, whoever will be one and Carlina work very often as a trio. And Arthur has collaborative skills, which Eric... And, uh, Arthur has collaborative skills, which Eric will never have. He knows everybody and everything. Um, he has, uh, uh, represented this community in so many ways which Eric never had, and I like Eric. Eric, uh, uh, and I work together on, on campaigns.
Because it's clear, uh, it's clear, your position is clear.
Okay, let me just finish what, Arthur, Arthur has experience in tenants' rights, dear and dear to my heart, I am a rent stabilized tenant, very important to many residents in not just District Three, but through the city of New York. Uh, for example, Eric has represented elderly tenants who would have been thrown out of their residences onto the streets such as Ruth Burke, who he, uh, became the guardian for, that was the only way he could protect her. And when she was being surveyed by her, uh, co-op board, he climbed up, got himself arrested.
Okay, Gil, Gil, you have to be able to wind it up and stop.
Let me wind, let me wind up then.
Nine, what is it? It's nine twenty.
I'll wind up in one sentence, they are, um, uh, like night and day in terms of depth, depth of experience. Uh, I like Eric, uh, if Arthur weren't running, he'd be my second choice. But Arthur is running and so much more qualified, thank you.
Okay.
Okay, now wait, one thing, hold it, hold the housekeeping here, hold it. Brad Harris, we do not recognize you. Can you unmute yourself and tell us why you're here this evening? Are you, are you a Palm member that no one knows? Brad?
Helpful, I had left him because I thought y'all knew him, I, I think it's time to probably remove him.
Yes, remove him now, please.
Thank you.
Okay, so now, uh, Nestor, you weren't here for the beginning of this. Um, what happened is that there are very few of us here and we had kind of decided that what we were gonna do is, um, I said that I would take, uh, the captions, you know, the whole thing was captioned, that I'll, I'll, I'll put, um, highlights in and send it out to all the members. So that, presumably at the next meeting, there could be a vote of the, of the members who have, um, paid. Scott then said that he, uh, had, has a position and, you know, and he changed his position from the DID meeting and he's now, uh, for Eric. And, and then Gil, you came in at the end of that, Gil went and explained why he is in favor of Arthur and now I don't really want to have a discussion of who we would endorse.
Again, I'm asking for a screening panel recommendation.
Well, we, we could do that, we could do that.
That's all I'm asking for.
Well.
What, Nestor and get, and well, Penny, you could start offering your impression.
So I could, I could send the, the, the highlights and a recommendation from this screening committee. Now, I would vote for Arthur. Gil would vote for Arthur, Scott would vote for Eric.
Right.
What about Mike, Peter and Nestor?
But, um, so, so, um, hello everyone, I had to jump out because I had another meeting at eight. Um, but I did manage to get a good, a good, um, you know, some, some good information and, and I, I got to listen to, uh, all of the candidates uh, from, uh, CD three, right? And so, so I think I am, from what I'm, what I'm hearing right now, there's a discussion as to how to approach, um, you know, us coming to vote, whether to hold on, you know, on voting tonight, maybe? And, and, and creating another date for us to choose uh, to, to do in a vote, right, uh, on who we're gonna endorse. Uh, and then while at the same time, um, Penny, you're saying that you're gonna send out the, the, the transcripts, right?
Well, highlight, I'm gonna highlight it, the whole thing would be pages and pages, pages, nobody would read it. I'll just do each question, you know, a highlight of the answer. Do it that way.
Gotcha, and then, um, Mike is offering that we, we select um, some of the ones that we recommend that, right, that there's a recommendation of a few of them that we will have then for another meeting, am I understanding that correctly?
No.
So that they can come in and speak to us on that.
I never say anything like that.
I know, no, no, he, he said that this, these, the six of us would create, would create uh, this advisory committee.
Recommendation, it's not a hard word, a screening panel recommendation, that's what I think we should arrive at.
We, we would put amongst ourselves for a recommendation, but leave the vote to a larger group.
Exactly, that's why it's called a recommendation, not a vote. Okay, Nestor, have, do you wanna, do you wanna let Nestor, knowing now what the object of the exercise is, complete his, do you have a, an impression, Nestor, from, from what you saw this evening, on who this screening panel should recommend? Not endorse, it's not an endorsement, it's a recommendation.
Taken a recommendation.
Well, I'm gonna say, uh, straight up, I'm gonna say that is Arthur, so that's, that's on my end.
But Peter?
How about you, Mike?
Well, Arthur, and, and I'm gonna, I'll tell you why, very briefly. I was surprised, I've known Eric for a long time. And I didn't think he took command this evening. He, the, the, his presence was withdrawn, he, his answers sometimes were muffled. I really was surprised at his demeanor this evening, I guess is what I'm saying, because okay, this is maybe not fair, but what occurred to me while he was speaking, most of his answers was this guy ain't ready for prime time. He didn't flesh out the answers, he, you know, gave uh, soundbites, if you will, but not fully thought, and now wait, I'm gonna give him, you know, benefit of the doubt. I did not like that there, that we doubled the number of questions and cut in half their response time. So we didn't really get the opportunity for them to flesh their things up. But the, uh, Arthur certainly took it in stride, was well prepared, hit his points, point by point by point by point in time, never went over.
No, he did go over, but I was very surprised that he was the one that I, that I least had to say time to, he really.
Okay, right, so.
He's super organized.
Yeah.
Okay, Peter?
Well, uh, I just wanna make one comment at this point, which is perhaps a little off, uh, what everyone else is talking about. And that's that I was a little disappointed that nobody mentioned anything about community control of the police.
Oh, yes. Well, there was a lot about police, but they didn't, that particular question wasn't, actually, I thought there was someone.
In the defund the police question.
Defund, but there, yeah.
That's right, but, but it was not, did not, you know, I, I, I would propose community control of the police.
Okay, but we didn't ask.
That's more important, yes.
We didn't, we didn't ask them that question, we didn't ask the questions and there were many, many, many things that could be asked, that was.
Of course, of course.
So it really doesn't go into your, uh, decision about who you would recommend.
I thought, uh, Scott said that, you know, um, Eric answered that question about uh, defunding the police in a way he liked best with, what was it, something to do with CCRB? You wanna restate your position?
Yes, uh, and, you know, a lot of the answers on, uh, the policing issues were very similar, but, um, Eric is the only person who talked about strengthening the CCRB and giving them authority over disciplinary decisions. Right now, the police commissioner is the ultimate decider when it comes to CCRB, uh, hearings. And so they can have a recommendation and then the police commissioner, uh, can do whatever he or she wants. And now, that's been a major problem for years and years. Um, and Arthur's also the only person who talked about residency for new police hires. Uh, I will say, Arthur's politics are much more, much closer to mine than Eric. I mean, with respect to Bernie Sanders and progressive politics in general, I would normally support Arthur, but for the purposes of the city council, a local city council district, I think Arthur actually called out transportation alternatives, called them Nazis, i- if, I'm not sure if that was the exact phrase.
Absolutely not called them Nazis, absolutely.
Called them something, I don't, I'd have to Google it.
I never heard the word Nazis.
Then, then, then.
Transportation alternatives, what he, what he said, talked about was Polly, whatever her name is.
Rottenberg.
Criticized her, but he didn't call anybody Nazis.
Well, he used some word, I, I, I'm not sure what the word was.
Scott, you have every right to your point of view.
Okay, so now we have Mike, Penny, Dr. Gil, Nestor. That's four out of six, so I think.
Peter is what, abstaining or, or what are you doing, Peter?
I would abstain at this point.
Okay, so we have one abstention for recommending and one recommending for otherwise, so, so let's go with that. And, and we don't have to give any names.
Right.
Just a recommendation.
Yeah, yeah.
One vote for Eric, four for Arthur, one abstention.
Okay, and, um, and then, but this is, this is just a, the recommendation of this screening.
Panel, this.
Panel.
Write it down so that you get it right, so.
Okay, okay.
Screening panel.
Because, um, uh, because we just didn't have enough people really to feel.
Well, we weren't ready.
Mike, I have a question for you, who do you think, who do you think, um, you know, answered the question on disability rights? Um, who, who do you think did the best job out of all the candidates?
That's why Arthur, I'm, I'm one hundred percent, you know, supporting Arthur. Not only did he answer all the questions best, but he's been there, you know, he's been five oh four's attorney. He helped us get those four new elevators. You know, it was the lawsuit that he put in, anytime I have an issue, I can go to Arthur and if it's something that can be, uh, solved litigiously, he will file, he's not afraid to file the lawsuit and he does it pro bono, we're not paying him.
Can I, uh?
Let, let me finish my point, please.
Okay.
So, uh, he has volunteered to represent us in court over many issues, including the elimination of bus stops in a neighborhood that is forty-four, the population is forty-four percent higher than anywhere else in New York City of seniors with disabilities. And this is the one place in the city where they've decided to try the experiment, which is now, I think, gonna be permanent, of eliminating all these bus stops. The problem I've got with that is, you know, uh, I'm opposed to the elimination of bus stops for a lot of reasons, but as regards to people with disabilities, it really does, uh, limit them, it really does. Uh, it is a painful, um, exercise for them, I can remember a constituent who called crying on the phone, because when she comes down from her, um, doctor, Twenty-Eighth and Fifth, and gets off the bus there, that walked, she, she has to stop three times because of the pain and the exhaustion. And she, where she started crying, she says, I don't know what I'm gonna do in a snowstorm. So it's a wrong-headed thing, it, this is not the place in the city where the incidence of disabled is forty-four percent higher than anywhere else in New York City. And this is where they take that program, so he sued for it. So, you know, I mean, yeah, you're, you're not gonna talk me off, off Arthur.
I, I feel the same way, I feel like he, he went beyond answering that question because he answered in specific details what he's accomplished, what he's done, his own, he put, he inserted his own, uh, um, feelings into this, this work he's been doing, um, and so I think he, he really outpaced all of them because most of them kind of didn't either ha- have enough time to answer directly that question, or they were just, you know, evading having to answer with the direct and clear answers, you know.
Well, they don't have.
Also, Arthur frequently not talked about what he would do.
Yo, wait, 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 let.
They don't have the history of, of accomplishments that Arthur has, that's the thing. That's why he could just zero in on answers, cuz he didn't have to fumble around, he talked about what he's done and what, and what he, you know, where he wants to take the city.
Thank you Penny, you said what I was about to say.
Thank you, okay, so now let's talk about District Two, okay, Scott, you got one more?
Yeah, just briefly, I, I put in the chat a, uh, link to an article from AM New York, um, in which, um, Arthur blasted transportation alternatives for engaging in bullying, uh, when they picketed it outside his house. He, he, he compared transportation alternatives to the Ku Klux Klan.
Okay, fine.
And, uh, and I'll also note that Arthur did not get the endorsement of DSA, New York City, um, of which I'm a member, um, because they had concerns about the issue of his aggressive opposition to, uh, the buswa- bus, uh, lanes.
Okay, so.
Scott, I love your independence.
Yo, please.
Yes.
Uh, I was with Arthur the day before, or maybe the same day, where they announced that they were gonna have this big demonstration in front of his house to try to humiliate him, but it was at our press conference to announce the lawsuit on the bus stops. And they hijacked our press conference. So it's more than just their actions in front of Arthur's house, disrupting his neighborhood, trying to embarrass him in front of his neighbors, which is not the way you do that, those kind of things, I mean, maybe you do it with a Cuomo, but, you know, with a, with a attorney who's trying to do the right thing, you don't do it that way. But, uh, they also hijacked our press conference. You know, they didn't ask to be part of it, they just literally pulled reporters away from our press conference, so I'll never forgive them for that. This was not the time for them to, to, uh, try to grandstand, and yes, in that sense, they do have a certain, um, questionable approach to their advocacy. You don't go and hijack somebody else's press conference, you don't go and disrupt a, a quiet street and embarrass a guy at home. So, say what you will about transportation alternatives, but they are an organization that was founded with their number one, uh, 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 not achievement, um, goal was accessibility in the subways. Now they don't even talk about it, all they talk about are bikes, 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 because that's what they're funded to do. All right? They are no longer transportation alternatives as was founded back in the early eighties. They are now something else that is, you know, they are spokespeople for some other people who have, who are funding them to promote bikes, 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 bikes. They don't have.
Thank you, Michael.
Mike, Mike, uh, can, can you tell us briefly what the issue is with the bus stops, with the?
Sure, uh, so, what I call it is this, you know, the, the, um, MTA proudly touts that by doing this select bus service, they have shaved off, I'm gonna be generous, five minutes from beginning of route to end of route. Five minutes, so what I say is, we have to look at the door-to-door trip time for the rider. Because there's a world of difference. Um, and now I'm talking about able-bodied. Between running a block to catch a bus or running three blocks to catch a bus, it means you're gonna miss that bus. And then you're gonna have to add ten minutes for the, wait, ten to fifteen minutes waiting for the next bus uh, to add to your door-to-door trip time, so they shave off five minutes for the drivers, I guess. Uh, but the riders get a ten-minute increase, and so it's not effective, but who would? But who disadvantages is, uh, along the corridors that they're talking about avenues A and D. Uh, th- there is a thirty-eight percent higher population of people with disabilities. And when you include the adjoining streets in between those avenues. It's a forty-four percent higher incidence of, uh, population, people with disabilities. And that's where they wanted, they, they don't do this anywhere else, eliminating the bus stops. You know, avenue of a first avenue. Every bus stop remained and select buses went around it. Why did they choose the lower east side to make this experiment? And it looks now, because there was, you know, they promised that in sixty days they were going to do a review. Don't you know I was looking for that review? And it didn't happen. They just ran, railroaded this thing through. And our only hope of restoring something to protect people with disabilities and the average rider is Arthur's lawsuit.
So now there are less bus stops essentially.
Much less. There, there, there are places where it's a five-block gap.
Crazy.
Like from Eleventh Street to Fifth Street, there are no bus stops.
Crazy.
Oh, you, you know what? You're absolutely right because I, I was, uh, yeah, in my work, I had to be in the neighborhood. And I had to walk and I was, I remember walking on Avenue A, I think it was.
Yeah, yeah.
Walking like for four blocks or something like, from Fourteenth Street to, I don't know, I, I walked like blocks and I was like, what the hell?
Oh yeah. Uh, first of all, it's from Fourteenth Street to Eleventh. That's okay, only three. But then it goes from Eleventh to Fifth Street, five blocks.
So, so what they did was to save five minutes in travel time, they eliminated stops?
Yep.
And he stopped.
Because I know that there's been all these arguments about the Fourteenth Street corridor not being any faster. I mean, you know, people are saying, people, um, in, in the community are saying, give us back Fourteenth Street. This has been a failed project and buses, you know, they gave you three minutes. But that doesn't have to do with, there are, have been bus stops eliminated, but that doesn't have to do with elimination of bus stops. That has to do with increased speed because there aren't, there isn't all that traffic. And I just want to say that I travel on buses on Fourteenth Street and it's a huge difference. It's a huge difference. The, the buses are so much.
You don't travel on them down to the, to or from the lower east side.
But that has nothing, that has nothing to do with, that has nothing to do with the elimination of bus stops. I'm not talking about the elimination of bus stops at all. I'm just talking about the improvement to my life and to the life of, uh, lots of people in this community by having that busway. Having that street be, not have private traffic on. I love it. I love it.
By the way, Michael, sorry. Michael, were you at the DID forum?
An enormous.
No.
If you think Eric was not ready for prime time tonight, he was by comparison terrific tonight. He was much, much worse, much more halting, much more incoherent at the DID forum. I was embarrassed for him.
I, I, I was at both of those and I agree with Gil. I don't think he's as bad as you were making him out to be, but he was better tonight. And, uh, and still he was not, I don't think he's impressive. I wouldn't say he's, uh, not for any, for prime time candidate. I think that he is too much of a, of an establishment candidate.
Right.
Also that.
I'll just offer this, that the only thing that he gives as his accomplishment all happened to be Corey's accomplishments.
Yeah. Also, we have to talk about Carlina.
Yeah, we got to get into district two, but let's see if we're done with district three yet. Okay, Scott, you have one more thing. Go ahead.
I know, I will say, I mean, I, I have no objection to actually making the endorsement decision. It seems like I am in the distinct minority and I don't think that's going to change. And we don't have a lot of members coming to meetings anyway. So I, I am personally supporting Eric, but it doesn't seem like the endorsement will be going to, to Eric and I would have been surprised if it were. And, and, um, so if it's going to save everybody work on putting this together, I have no objection to that.
Okay. So no, we're not going to change our original principle, which was we are going to come up with a recommendation and let the membership vote for the endorsement.
I like that.
Right. It, it makes world of sense to do it that way.
Makes it more democratic.
Right. Uh, uh, and so, you know, the other thing is, you know, I think failing was more impressive than our Eric. Marnie at times, uh, you would think I would be with Alletta because she's a person with disability. But she too is not ready for prime time.
Failing was not as good at the prior forum. Uh, he had inconsistent positions. He's just not as experienced or well thought through. Arthur is a heavyweight and the others are lightweights, including Eric.
Well, they're, they're actually getting better. I mean, I thought they were all better tonight than they were. You know, they get more experience. They have these, uh.
They were better.
And then they're ready for the next time.
Well, if it went for years, they'd eventually come to halfway where Arthur is.
Yeah.
Okay, Peter, go ahead.
Yeah, uh, uh, a side comment. Uh, I can't remember all the candidates right now as, uh, and I, it would help, I think, if you could include a photograph of each candidate with their position.
Well, I, I, I could try, but I'll tell you this. I send out emails that are, uh, that have photographs in them. And then when I, and I include myself in the mailing, and then when I get them, there's no photographs and I don't know what's happening. I'm not a tech person. I can try. It's not hard.
Do what you can.
Yeah, I'll do it.
The one you sent me, their photographs turned up. That was fine. And the one I, I forwarded to our club.
Good, good.
Fine. All the pictures turned up.
And could I just mention, um, my criticism of Eric at the DID forum was something that I put in the chat in DID's event because they kept their chat functioning. Eric is the only candidate who does not have an issue statement on his campaign website. And he, he privately texted me and said, he does not have any paid staff, even though he apparently has the more campaign funds than any other candidate. But, uh, I guess he's been focusing on other things and he expects to put up an issues, uh, statement shortly, but it's not there.
I saw that comment on, on the, uh, the chat. And, um, I'm surprised that that's why he said he didn't have it because he has raised, I think, I saw a hundred and forty thousand dollars. And that's, much of that will be matched. So he's, he's rolling in dough.
He's maxed out what he can get.
Maxed out. So, but, uh, but.
He says he doesn't have any campaign paid, paid staff yet.
Okay. But the thing that I want, that I'm sorry about is that the only people who put this together were me and Mike, Mike and I. And I could not.
It was you.
I, I did ninety percent of it, but Mike did some.
As you did for our first forum, the nineteenth candidate, you were terrific.
So I, I could not, uh, do what I would have liked to have done with the chat. Because I was busy trying to be timekeeper. You know, so I, I didn't have, I mean, at DID, they have many more people who are active all the time and I didn't have that. And that's why we didn't do, in, in some ways, we didn't do as good a job as DID. But I think our, our, um, uh, you know, the, the structure was better, that there was less time for these candidates to just spend time and time and time saying absolutely nothing. You know, uh, ten, ten minutes of fumfering for, for one little jewel of information.
Right.
In this.
I thought it was better than, I'm sorry.
Thanks.
But, but I thought that they got a lot more across about where they stood and what they thought. And, and what their understanding is of government, which I think the, the, the other four candidates don't really have that much of an understanding. Um, you know, maybe they will as this goes on, but they don't yet. And, um, and I'm sorry that I couldn't put on as good a production as DID could because I was just really.
It was great. It was great, but.
I said we were more effective in getting out information than DID.
True.
I liked, I watched both and I thought we did a better job.
Thank you. Uh, I just want to ask a question of Stephen. Stephen, I, I saw that Louis Goldstein was there and it was he I had in mind. What, with regard to closed captioning. Do you have any way of gauging whether somebody actually utilized the closed captioning? Stephen?
You know, he may have left. I mean, he's muted, but, uh.
Okay, be interesting to find out. I guess I could just text Louis and ask him. That's fine. Okay, uh, go ahead, Scott. I hope this is about two because we're done with.
Yeah, no, every, every time I watched the captioning, the video disappeared. So you couldn't do both at the same time.
Right, right.
Right. Didn't know how to do it.
And I don't, I don't know why that is.
But if you could put split screen on your own screen, you could have had both of them. But I, I did that once a few months ago. That doesn't mean I can do it now.
Got you. Okay, can we talk about two now? Carlina?
Carlina. Do we have a position on Carlina? I mean, um.
Doris, 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 Doris.
Well, I, you know.
Who else lives in the district? Who, who else lives in her district?
Oh, I don't. I don't.
I do.
Uh, what has your experience been with Carlina? Are you pro Carlina or?
I'm pro Carlina. I mean, first of all, she's one, unopposed, so, so there'd have to be something, uh, uh, deficient in her, um, uh, candidacy for reelection, but I think she's been fine. I know, uh, maybe village preservation has had issues with her. But that's, um, one specific, um, group of people and, um, and.
Objection.
Uh, no, I support Carlina. I mean, some people think she's going to be a candidate for speaker. I don't know whether that's the case.
Yeah.
More power to her. She's a wonderful candidate.
So we're, uh, can we do?
Some issues with her about the, uh, upzoning, that she wasn't being responsive, that she was being evasive. Uh, they were very angry and unhappy with her.
Um, we are not DID. What did you think of her response this evening?
And I thought, I thought she was great. I do remember that when it came to Beth Israel, she was really good. And, but, but she's not totally accessible all the time. But how can you be? I mean, you know, she, she's running, she's running a, a, a public office there. It's, it's hard. I think, I, I, I'm very impressed with her.
She was very helpful when we met, when we met with her, when our committee for Beth Israel met with her, she was very positive with us.
She was great and with real, with real actions to take. And insights into the way things work. No, she's, she's really good and smart. Oof.
Very smart.
Response, I can tell you as a constituent, she's extremely responsive to her constituents. And, and I don't mean just me because I, you know, I'm out of a club and block association, all that shit. So I'm not talking about me, although I will say I've had great experiences. But, you know, I worked for another government, uh, another elected official. And the feedback I get from constituents I deal with is that, you know, as much as they can do. Being that, you know, they have oversight over city agencies and we have oversight, oversight over state agencies. So we get referrals from her when it's a state issue. But no one's ever complained about the depth of service that they get from her office. So she's great on constituent services. She's great on the issues. And we really need more people like her in the city council.
Okay, so should we, should we, 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 we could take a vote on whether we would recommend? You know, the panel recommends, or do we want to just say, we can't, we can't say that the body endorses. We can't.
We, we can't. We're, we're, we're going to, if we're going to do a recommendation for one race, we have to do a recommendation for the other. Even though we can, I think, say, is there anyone who does not support Carlina?
Not a, not, not a soul.
Right. So we can say the, the screening panel unanimously recommended Carlina.
Well, I, I'm going to abstain because I was not, I didn't hear her speak.
Oh.
Um, so.
Okay, we have one abstention.
Yeah, so I'm going to have to abstain. Uh, you know, I do, um, I am trusting that you guys, you know, believe in her. Uh, you know, but at the same time, you know, there is, you know, from my end, I've heard voices not speak with her in good light. So, so I'm going to abstain.
Fair enough.
Yeah.
And then we'll take it up again whenever we reconvene. And we'll decide on, on.
By the way, the initials of the person, uh, you've heard this from, are they J S?
Uh, well, let's just say that in those circles.
Yeah, that's what I thought. Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Uh, all right.
You know a lot, Mike.
Yeah.
I don't know who you're talking about.
And, and, and you know what it is, um, Mike, is that, you know, you, I, I build relationships with a lot of people, right? And you work with them and you know what they're about, you know? And so it's, it's a hard thing to, you know, I know you guys and I build a relationship with you guys. I trust you guys. And you build a relationship with other people as well and you, you're sort of are put in this situation where, all right, so I'm going to abstain for that reason.
Fair enough. And we love Scott too, by the way, even if we don't agree with him on a specific issue. Uh, he is, uh, not alone one of our trusted and important members, but he has insight and a keen, uh, perception. We just don't always see either. This is good. This is healthy that we're not monolithic.
And can, can I just, uh, uh, inform Gil, I don't know if you saw it, but I posted a story from New York Magazine on your Facebook page because I believe it's about your building.
Okay, my building, by the way, um, the co-op board and I, um, are not one and the same. I am a rent stable. I negotiated the deal, by the way, that there could be rent stabilized tenants. The Rudens had it in mind.
But it's a lengthy profile of Two Fifth Avenue. All, everything related to Two Fifth Avenue.
Okay.
Well, was it, were they, were they owner shareholders?
No, it's a story. It's not about owners and renters per se, but it goes into the experiences of living there.
It's a wonderful building to live in, by the way. This I will say. Uh, we had Edith Windsor there and Larry Kramer, uh, uh, others you might not love like Ed Koch. We had Bella Abzug. Uh, uh, so I would say for the fifty-two years I have lived there, uh, for pennies. He once asked me, is the maintenance low? I said, no, it's sky high. He said, well, you must be a capitalist. I said, no, I negotiated a great deal. Because the Rudens had in mind that there would be no rent stabilized tenants. It was an eviction plan and I found the best lawyer in New York City for co-ops in condos to form.
I, I don't want to tie up the meeting. I just wanted to call your attention to it.
Right.
I'll read it. I promise to read it.
Any, any closing comments that have, have to do with tonight's forum?
Okay.
I thought tonight's forum was great, by the way, just.
Okay, thank you. Peter, Peter and, and raise Gil.
Uh, it's, uh, I'm not, maybe I'm a little out of order, but I think I'm the only person here who lives in district one. Is that true?
I live in district one.
Oh, I, I didn't, I didn't realize it went up that far. Okay.
I'm at the northern end of it. I, it ends at my building.
Okay.
We will have, we will have a forum for district one and four.
Yeah, I know. Nestor, where, where, which district do you live in?
Three.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm in three. Okay, we're pretty.
Okay. Anything else folks where we say good night?
All right. So let me just sum up. I am going to get the, these captions. I am going to, um.
Photographs if available.
Photographs available, but also I, I'm going to keep this very short. I'm not going to, you know, people aren't going to read really long. I'm just going to keep it short and then, and then, uh, send it out. I'm going to.
With our recommendation.
We have a meeting. Does anybody have any ideas about that?
When should we have a meeting? Soon.
Our general meeting?
Yeah, we haven't had a meeting in
Long time. We need a meeting.
The Palm meeting, at which we can, uh, you know, have this vote. I don't know if we do a discussion so well.
And discuss other things as they may come up.
Right, yeah. Okay. Okay, we could try to have some kind of
I love Palm. I want Palm to be more, more visible.
Yeah.
Uh, we're, we're a powerful force in the community.
In December? We'll have a meeting in, in December?
Right. I like December.
All right, I'm, I'm trying to get
About December twenty-fifth.
December twenty-fifth? That sounds good.
No one
I like, I like it.
You know, nobody's going away. Nobody's having family parties.
And it's by Zoom, so it can be anytime.
Right. So, so
They asked Elena Kagan at her, at, um, uh, uh, Supreme Court, um, hearings, what do Jewish people do on Christmas Day? They said, she said, like, now, what do you do on Christmas Day? And she said, like most Jewish people, I go out for Chinese food.
And a movie, Chinese food and a movie.
And a movie.
Okay, so I know that DID is on the eighteenth, so that's out. Um, you know, uh, Mondays are no good for me. Tuesday, have the, the twenty-fourth week, can't do it. Um, uh, you know, I don't know. You want to do like a Friday or a Saturday? Mondays are no good for me.
Whatever you like, I'm good with. Whatever you say, I'll say yes to.
Well, we're all Jewish here, except for Nestor.
I'm not Jewish. Well, actually I am. Maybe I'm part.
You know I'm Jewish. Don't you know I'm not Jewish?
Isn't your grandfather Jewish, Peter?
My grandfather is Jewish. That's correct.
Oh, your grandfather. Okay. So we're not doing twenty-fourth or the twenty-fifth. The seventeenth and the eighteenth are good.
Am I remembering Gelb was, was the predecessor of Gail?
That's correct.
I have good memories.
Okay, should we do the
My name should be Gelb.
Should we do the nineteenth?
I'm good with the nineteenth.
What's wrong with, with the twenty-second, Penny?
The twenty-second is Sunday?
No, the, the, the twenty-second of December, right?
You're in the wrong month.
Oh, I'm in December. I'm so sorry. Okay, the twenty-second is good for me. How about everybody else? That's good.
I think that's too close to Christmas. I think it's that
I, I, I think it's a little too close, close to Christmas, in my opinion. Uh, although I don't think it, 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 I doubt if it would affect me, other than the fact that, uh, twice a month, I usually have meetings on Tuesdays, Tuesday evenings. And I don't know, uh,
So let's make it another day. We want you, Peter, so let's